All right. Madam Clerk, I think we're finally going to get started this morning. If you could get us moving with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Brandal.
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio. Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember John.
And then we're going to get our morning started with the invocation by Henry Pauls of the Central Community Church. Pastor Pauls, if you could start us off. So if we'd stand and then we'll salute our flag at right after that.
Morning, Council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an invocation blessing this morning. God who gave Solomon great wisdom spoke these words, "For though the righteous may fall seven times, they arise again; but those who have no faith in principles to guide them are brought to ruin by calamity." So, Lord God, teach us to be optimistic. We don't want to be pessimistic in these days. Let us have a clear understanding of you and let us have hope in all of life. Remind us that all trials have an end and that all trials have a divine purpose. Remind us that all trials work together for our learning and for our good. Help us to discern the difference between hope and faith in you and the strong desire for specific answers and results to our wishes. Even as we share one another's dashed dreams and disappointments, build our confidence that these are also part of a plan. We cling to the promise that you know how to give good gifts. We cling to the knowledge that you, our Father, long to give us good gifts. Through pain, through rubble, through drought, we seek you. We need your hope. We need your peace. We need your grit and determination. We need your power. Show us how to share your overcoming attitude to all so desperate for relief. We are thankful today for men and women who serve our city in these days. Give them the wisdom, insight, and courage needed to lead with optimism, faith, and hope. And now may God bless you and protect you. May God smile on you and be gracious to you. May God show you his favor and give you his peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the New York for which it stands, one nation in the fight.
Thank you, Pastor Pauls. Yes, yes, it was. We have some ceremonial presentations this morning, and the first one, I believe, is with the SPCA and Councilmember Brand, and we have a little friend here today. So, could you please bring our new little friend up to the microphone? And, oh, there he is. Councilman Brand's going to meet you down there.
For what, SPCA?
Yes. And are you Talia? All right, Talia, thanks for joining us this morning. That dog has white paws.
What a beautiful little dog here. So, today, again, we have the Dog of the Week. What's his name?
Lucia.
Want to say a few things about her?
Yes, this is Lucia. She's four months old. She came to us as a stray. She's one of our Fourth of July dogs. So unfortunately during the Fourth of July time, we noticed that more dogs come into shelters due to the festivities or the fireworks, actually. So we just recommend that people secure their fences and just take extra precautionary measures like IDs and things like that. She came without an ID, so we were unable to, you know, follow up with her owners. So after her stray hole time, we put her up for adoption because she's very gentle, she's very sweet, she's healthy, and so she's looking for a home now. Again, she's a Chihuahua Terrier, again, about four months old, and her adoption, it's only $28.80 to adopt. So for the rest of the summer, we're going to have this really good adoption special, only $28 to take one of our little buddies home. So whether it's a dog or a cat, come on by and check them out. More like Lucia you will find. And also, our horses are free. If you have land or if you know anybody that has ranchers interested, our horses are free to adopt. So I just invite everybody to the SPCA. Our website is ccspc.com, and you'll be able to see some of the other adoptable animals there.
Do you include, this dog is spayed, has all the shots?
Correct, yes. So the adoption special is going to include the spay neuter, the microchip, the licensed vaccines, free vet visit, and pet insurance. It's a whole package with your adoption. The way I like to think about it, you know, the animal's technically free, you're just paying for the services, and you're saving two lives because not just the animal that you're taking, but you're clearing space in the shelter for an incoming animal, as we do get a lot every single day.
What a bargain, right?
No kidding.
And, Council President, you could get a horse, too. Give a big hand for the SPCA for the great job they do.
Thank you, Talia. Councilman Brand, I think you should stay down there. You've got the next presentation also. Speaking of friends, our friend Ann Cluse is here today in the PG&E Cooling Centers Project and a check presentation, so.
Good morning. And we have a big check for $25,000 to Lee Brant- no, to the City of Fresno. Why don't you go ahead and explain this, Ann?
Thanks for having me here today. The cooling center program through PG&E started about seven years ago, and to the city's credit, the city started cooling centers before that time. And it's a way to provide a safe and effective place for people to get out of the heat. It provides comfort and relief to those who maybe are in a situation who have an air conditioner that don't- doesn't work, or, you know, they're having trouble paying the high PG&E bill as a result of the air conditioning. So I'm really proud to be here to continue this partnership with the City of Fresno and PG&E. We are really big in making sure we make an impact in the local community, and this is part of that. There's been a lot of tragic heat-related stories, I think we've all been following. Children and our elders are really at risk, so the fact that you're able to provide this cooling center to provide them opportunities for relief and comfort is really good. So I'm really proud to be able to present this $25,000 check to the City of Fresno again this year in support of the cooling centers, and I congratulate the City of Fresno for their continued commitment to the folks that are in need of it. So here's a good news story for you, and I would really like to see if Councilmember Brand would go to the ATM and try and deposit this into the ATM, because I think that would make some good YouTube video. I just, I'm waiting for somebody to try that.
I'm willing to try anything. We love good news stories here at City Hall. Anything else you want to say?
Yes, I'd also like to mention the fact that not only does PG&E help us open these cooling centers for the entire community, they're also tremendous supporters for our urban greening program and assist the city with coming up with the money to pay for trees and also provide volunteers to help plant them throughout the city.
One question. Where were you 50 years ago when I was growing up? I went to Jackson Elementary. Paul knows about that. We had a fan. That's all we had for cooling at 100 degrees. And at night, we had one swamp cooler for five people, so I'm glad we're picking it up.
I was two years old, living on the south side of Chicago at that time.
Great. Please give him a big hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right, next we have some presentation of certificates of recognition, and we have three councilmembers all teaming up to do this. Councilman Baines, Councilman John, and Councilman Capriolio each have a person that they would like to recognize today, so, gentlemen.
Thank you. And obviously, they gave it to the senior councilmember to start off. The elder. Ouch, that was- that's what the 50 years ago was, Lee. Just wanted to let you know. Now, first of all, we really want to take this opportunity to thank, again, PG&E, our partners, for giving us this opportunity to work with a lot of smart, young, I want to say students, but young adults that has come. And this is one of those programs that, I think, Member Baines and I, we've been involved for a couple of years now. And is this your first year? Member Capriolio? And what this program does is give students an opportunity to come in, intern that wants to intern in our offices, and hopefully, you know, with the opportunities they have and they get a chance to see what city council work is all about and some of the activities that we do, and we hope that they take that back and really rejuvenate and encourage them to continue their education, which is one of the most important things, but also to make sure that they understand that what city government does, what we do, impact lives in our community. So this is just our recognition to make sure that we want to thank PG&E, but also to those interns that have decided to spend their wonderful summer at our office. So with that, Member Capriolio.
Would you please join us, the interns? Justin, come on up. We have prepared a certificate of recognition, and it says, "On behalf of the City of Fresno, we extend our gratitude to each of you for your dedication, diligence, and hard work toward our constituents in each of our districts. All of us here at the City of Fresno are very fortunate and very thankful to have all of you as parts of our team during this last six-week period, and you will be greatly missed because you've done such good work for us. So thank you so much, and it's been our pleasure. So best wishes for your continued success."
And I really can't add a whole lot to everything that's already been said. As you see, this is my intern here, Xavier Richards, and I can tell you that having the interns in our building has been such, such an added benefit. And I get all my reports from you from Ty, by the way, and she says you're doing a fantastic job. She loves your work ethic, the fact that you're here every day, you're working very hard, and I want to commend PG&E for sending us, year after year, really, really good interns. And I can tell you, Xavier, you have big shoes to fill. So our last intern, no, two interns ago, one volunteer of the county, Fresno, entire Fresno County, came out of my office. I want to say that, Blong. We put out superstars out of District Three. So Xavier, but I say that, the interns we have have had for the last few years have all gone to do great things. We expect nothing less of you. We really appreciate the time you spent in the office. Thank you, PG&E, for just really sending us high-quality individuals. We appreciate your effort in this. And with that, I think we want to do some paparazzi-type pictures.
I think we have one more partner that's out here to make sure that they're part of, and this is the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the youth interns, the Boys and Girls Club of Fresno County and PG&E, thank you so much for this wonderful recognition. We certainly appreciate your partnership in opening your doors here at City Hall to host interns and provide them with the wonderful opportunity to experience and get the exposure to the inner workings of city government. Additionally, thank you so much for your support of the program. This is our third year going, and we've always had great support from City Hall and the mayor's office, and really, this program wouldn't be successful without your support, so thank you.
As representatives, we always have one more word.
And I have to bring out a bus and roll somebody under right now. So I just want to say that I forgot to mention in my opening remarks that this actually was Member Capriolio's idea. So Paul came right in this year. I think this may have been his first year with intern, the first full year he was able to have an intern, and he said, "Listen, we need to make sure we recognize our interns." And of course, Blong and I jumped right on board, but I just wanted, I wanted folks here to know that this was, this definitely was birthed by Member Capriolio, and we're happy, happy to do it. So thanks again for the good idea, Cap.
Thank you very much.
Right, Councilman Capriolio, you're standing right there.
Yes, I am.
We have a proclamation for the terraces at San Joaquin Gardens Day.
It's a great pleasure for me today to recognize these people, and if you'd all come forward with me, I'd really appreciate that and receive this proclamation. And this is Terraces at San Joaquin Gardens. Yes, come all up. Yes, please. So, we have, on behalf of the City of Fresno, some recognition here, and I wanted to read this proclamation to you. It has some great information in it, and I'm very proud to be here today to make this presentation. It reads, "Whereas we are delighted today to honor Terraces at San Joaquin Gardens," also known as TSJG, "and to celebrate the grand reopening of this remarkable facility. The Terraces at San Joaquin Gardens continues to lead our community in involvement with providing premier housing and health care services for our senior citizens. This has been going on since 1966. They have invested over $120 million in this redevelopment." So can I have a round of applause just for that fact? That's fresh dollars in our community. Thank you. And that, in fact, expands the residential apartments. It adds memory care center, as well as a state-of-the-art 24-hour skilled nursing center, and it services over 300 individuals. Whereas this community encourages its residents to engage in lifelong learning, volunteer services, wellness activities, social opportunities, to experience the journey of aging with quality and dignity. Whereas TSJG is owned and managed by ABHOW, a nonprofit, nonsectarian organization. Now, therefore, be resolved that we, the mayor of the City of Fresno, as well as my council colleagues, we do hereby extend our heartiest congratulations to all those who are invested in this wonderful redevelopment project, their time, talents, and resources, and this, we encourage all Fresenons to join us in extending their congratulations. Be it further resolved that we do hereby declare July 17 to be Terraces at San Joaquin Gardens Day. Congratulations." And we have a couple of comments we'd like to include.
Oh, yes. Okay. I'm waiting for the picture.
Here we go.
Here we go. He's telling me how to use this mic because you have to speak into it. I said, "We're used to that because we know some people want to talk and keep the mic out there, and you can't hear them." But anyway, this is really an exciting day. I'm going to turn it around so everybody can continue to see it. I had no idea of all of the beautiful words that were going to be presented on this proclamation, but I am here to say thank you for this recognition and thank you for those residents that accompanied me. They want to be sure I'm behaving appropriately out in public. I am serving this year as their president of the resident council, and it's an exciting opportunity. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about ABHOW. This is how we pronounce it, ABHOW, and it stands for American Baptist Homes of the West. And we did celebrate 65 years in February of this year. And for us, TSJG, we will be celebrating our 10th, no, 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 our 50th birthday within about two years. In fact, you'll probably be president when we are celebrating 50 years. And I, I need to tell you this because it's unusual, but I have lived at the Terraces for nine and a half years, and I've been there through all of this reconstruction. And you need to understand what we have gone through and how exciting it has been. When I moved there, we were just called the San Joaquin Gardens, and now with all the reconstruction and the reopening, we are now the Terraces at San Joaquin Gardens. And at that time, the executive director appointed me to be among 10 other people to be her advisory committee, some team members, some residents. And it was our job to be the eyes and ears of what was going on on the campus and what were people saying. Are they happy about the reconstruction? Are they happy about the changes? And let her know. And we took a field trip down to Phoenix, which was one of our fellow, or sister, do you call it sister communities? And we have 11 continuing care communities, and you may not know what that means either. So it's called Continuing Care Retirement Communities. We have all four levels of care, which is unique to this area. And so we got to see what had happened down there. They were two years ahead of us. They were experiencing growing pains. So we got to find out what they did right and what they did wrong, and come back home and try to put into practice what we learned. And it has been an exciting time because sometimes we'd have four different construction areas going on simultaneously. And in fact, it was what I considered entertainment, because you'd look out your back door and there'd be men in green suits painting and doing all kinds of things, and then we got to watch them dig the excavation for the only underground parking for a facility or community. So it was entertaining for us, and we enjoyed every bit of it. But, you know, we are a beautiful community, we have many amenities, but I have to tell you, our greatest asset are our residents and our team members. We call our employees team members, because we do work together as a team. We enjoy each other, we love each other, we work together, and sometimes, as families do, we may have disagreements, but we work through those disagreements, and we have a beautiful community. And I am extending an invitation for all of you, and for all of you, if necessary and if you want to, to join us for our grand reopening on Tuesday, the 29th of January. January. See, I flubbed.
July.
July. It's hot in July. And enjoy, I think it's 10 o'clock in the morning for the outside community, and then we're going to repeat it in the afternoon for our residents, so they have their own private reopening ceremony. And I just want you to know how special we are. I want you to know how much we appreciate this recognition and come by and see us. And those of you who think you're too young to think about retirement, I tell people, start a Terraces account, which is nothing more than money set aside for buying into the Terraces when you're ready to retire. It's a great place. I think my time is up.
No, I was just going to say, Lee, did you get that information? You should start thinking about that sooner than, Ms. Sal, I think you might be too late. I'm not sure. But thank you very much for your information and for being here and for being such wonderful partners in our community. Really appreciate you. Thank you very much. I was, I was, no, she's on my reelection committee. Thank you. Round of applause, please.
I want to let everybody know that we're operating with a brand-new agenda system, and we're a little bit unfamiliar with it, so if you're following along by any chance, we're going to refer to items by the last three digits of their ID number. That's what I, that's what individualizes them, so it might be hard to follow if you've got, if you don't have that paper, but I'll be announcing that. Next, we have the approval of minutes for June 19 and 26, as well as the approval of the successor agency minutes of June 26. And Madam Clerk, I believe these have been moved to our next council meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. All the minutes will be back on the agenda next council meeting, July 24 for approval.
Okay, so we don't, we won't be approving those today, then. And now we're on to councilmember reports and comments. Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rudd and Assistant City Manager also, Renee, wanted to just inform you that yesterday we had a press conference at a small park in southeast Fresno, Willow and Balch, and basically it was a rededication. And I just really want to thank you, if you can extend the thank you, to Parks and Public Works and Solid Waste. I mean, it was like a partnership among the three, the three groups, and they were able to put together a, Solid Waste was able to put together a Cal Recycle grant, and then partnered up with Parks to share it and put in new playground equipment, and PG&E was gracious enough to provide some trees, which are part of the 500 trees that they, they're, they're giving to the city. And in fact, they're coming back in the fall to plant some more trees. But it's a, it's a, it's an area that's heavily saturated with, with children, and we were able, some of the children showed up actually just, you know, wanting to get to the, to the playground equipment, and it's so nice and brand-new. And one of the things is that, that was really important to us is that oftentimes you hear about the shortage of, of parks in the City of Fresno, and we end up not being able to take care of what we have. But in an area like this, it's like breathing new life into the area with, with the upgrade and of, of the playground equipment and new equipment and trees. And I mean, even, there was even, some of the elderly people showed up just, I mean, they were just excited. And the, the children and one of the apartment managers told us that they'd just been keeping an eye on it, making sure that they would be able to get there on the day it was opened up, so they can, so they can go and enjoy it. So it was just really a great day, and I wanted to thank, in particular, Danny Casey. I wanted to thank our new Parks Director, Mr. Molinaro, and Ann Cluse from, from PG&E. I mean, it just, it was just a great feeling to see all the children really come out and enjoy, enjoy the park. They didn't want to go back to, they didn't want to go back home right away. So it was, it was just a great day, and I wanted to, if you can extend the thank you to, to the department.
And I know Tommy's sitting out there. I also want to acknowledge and thank the folks in Public Utilities and Jerry Schuber and the folks who, who called us and said, "Hey, there's an opportunity for us maybe to partner on this Cal Recycle grant." And of course, our grant writer, Irma, who is just phenomenal. They got together, they got together, and then we did discussions with PG&E, and it just shows what happens when folks work together and collaborate on a common goal, and these are the kind of things that happen that make you want to get up in the morning and come to work. So thank you, Sal, for recognizing the efforts.
Yeah, it was just, and the other, the other additional thing that really helps the area, right next to the park is an EOC Head Start School there. So I mean, those, that little school is going to benefit a ton off that, so, thank you. And then, secondly, Mr. President, we had a, a journalist that passed away this, over the weekend, Eli Seton, who was a very, very good friend, and I often refer to him as the Herb Kane of Fresno. He, he was just, his wit and his humor and, and the stories that, that he wrote, it was, it was something that you always felt like he knew, he knew you or that he was everywhere. But he came from pretty humble beginnings, always lived in Sanger. I think he moved there when he was 14 years old and just grew up there, and his mom had passed away in Salinas, I believe, and he went there to live with relatives. And the thing that, that really isn't brought up, his years of service in the military and what he was able to, to accomplish as a pilot during the war, but he was just a great, down-to-earth, humble person, and I just know that even though he'd been retired for a while, there was quite a few folks, including myself, that kept in touch with him, and, and he never lost his, his sense of humor, and he's going to be really, really missed. And so what I'd ask is that if we can just have a moment of silence in Eli's memory.
Yes, that would be, that's a great idea, Sal. Well, Councilman Quintero, I'm glad that you brought him up. I heard yesterday that he had flown over 140 missions in World War II. That's, that's fantastic. I think maybe we should just add that we'll officially adjourn our meeting today in his memory, so thank you for bringing him up. Councilman John.
Thank you, Council President. City Mayor, just, I think it's a comment. You know, we've heard of the impact of the drought tremendously throughout the valley, and I know that a lot of the attention, and deservedly so, are a lot of our farmers, bigger farmers. But I've recently, in the last week or two, have gotten a lot of calls from a lot of the small farmers, the Southeast Asian farmers. These are the half acres to five acres or so that are growing here. And a lot of those calls are extremely desperate, talking about they can't get the water, so they're going to lose their crop. These are harder dollars. And I say this because we remember when we had that trees, and that was my first year here, and, and they were going through a similar thing with, with the natural disaster, and they had the same problems, because they are in that gap where they don't own the property, and their income is limited, and their voice is not as, as large as some of the organized farmers, that there are no services for them. And the city, and I want to thank Member Duncan at the time, we, we came up- And the city, and I want to thank Member Duncan at the time, we, we came up and said, you know what? This is our residence in, in the city of Fresno. And came up with a program to take some of our money that we had, about $100,000, put it out there as a loan. I think it was either low interest or 0% loan. And we had a 98% repayment rate, folks. And so I'm not sure that, what, what the idea's gonna be yet, but I just wanted to, to let our city know and council colleague know that there is a large population out there, these small farmers, that are going through this. As, as we're talking, many of those have probably already suffered the damages already from this. And as we know, just to drill for water, it's either an eight weeks wait to even a year. And just to do that costs you anywhere from $8,000 to $15,000 to $20,000. And if you're these small farmers, you're, you're at the bottom of the totem pole in terms of request. And so I just want to make sure that we're aware of it. And I'm not sure where I'm gonna go with this yet, but I just want to make sure that it's out to, to, to us council, those are our residents, and also to our city manager. Thank you.
All right. Screen is clear. Bruce, I would like to just ask, I know I've asked a couple times, on the county landfill, do we have an update on our participation with them?
We're having our first meeting with the consultant. They've, from my understanding, finished the work. So, uh, yeah, we're meeting on Monday. Tommy and I are meeting with the consultant, as well as the county, to go over their findings. So we're initiating those discussions, uh, on, on Monday. Once we progress or have made some progress, we'll report back within the next 30 days on how those negotiations are going.
So in the meantime, we're in just a month-to-month contract with them?
We're, we're in a month-to-month, not to exceed the current rate.
So did part of the study look at other options? Is that contained within that study?
No, what we've asked them to do is, is basically look at the financials, how much they've set aside in their reserves and whether or not those are appropriate. Um, you and I have the sidebar because there's another request I'm gonna be making on Monday. I don't want to get into it in open session. But there's some additional information that I think Tommy and I both believe is, is pertinent to these ongoing discussions before and if we start evaluating other opportunities. And so the negotiations that we're having with the county are strictly with the county. And we are also looking and evaluating other opportunities. But, you know, this isn't Tommy's first rodeo, so he's gonna be very helpful in, in these, in these negotiations, both with the county and maybe potential, uh, other, other opportunities or other, other sites.
Okay. I just wanted to remind council that this is a contract that we've had that's up. It's, yeah, and now we're continuing month-to-month. But there seems to be, to me, other options out there for the city of Fresno that could give our ratepayers a break on that, on the trash service. So I'm interested in seeing if there's, in discovering if there's any better opportunities for the city of Fresno. So thank you, Bruce. All right, then. Now we are on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
Uh, there's just one change. It is the 10:30 timed item for the bicycle workshop. ID number 126, on page nine, is going to be heard after lunch instead of at 10:30.
Okay. Thank you. The 10, we had a bicycle workshop. It was scheduled for 10:30, but it looks like they had some special guests coming for that. It didn't look like we were gonna make that, so we pushed it to after lunch. All right, then. So do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Council President, before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to continue item 14-108. That's an appeal of TTM 6033, as well as the workshop that's scheduled for today. And we will reschedule that in August.
Counsel, you don't need a motion. You can just ask that it be pulled and then it is unless somebody else makes a motion to keep it on.
I'd request that be pulled in.
All right. So that is the 10, uh, what was that, 10:45 item? And 14-108. All right, then. Do I have a motion to accept, to approve today's agenda with these changes? And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Now on to the consent calendar. I'm gonna ask if any members of the public would like to comment on any item that's on today's consent calendar. Please, please approach the microphone. All right. No comment on today's consent calendar. Any members of council like to pull any items for discussion or continue? All right, then. It looks like we're ready to vote on today's consent calendar. Do I have a motion to, to approve today's consent calendar?
Don't move.
Do I have a second? All right. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right. With no contested items, we're on to our general admin section of our agenda. And our first item is number 121. That's an enter, enter into a contract for budget software and services in the amount of $488,000 for an initial one-year setup of software and ongoing maintenance. And this is from our finance department. Jane, good to see you again this month.
Good morning, Council President, council members. Yeah, this is a, this is an item basically to acquire a new budget preparation system. Our current system is obsolete due to the inability to function properly with the Windows 7 environment and above. And this is now rendered brass as an obsolete and unreliable tool. We've gone through the bid process and have chosen Sherpa Government Solutions as the, the most responsible bidder and is asking council to award a requirements contract in the amount of $488,143 to acquire this system and associated costs. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
All right. Thanks, Jane. We'll, we'll go out to the public and may have some questions for you. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right. Up here at council, Councilman Baines.
Thank you. And I don't know, this, this may be more for Carolyn, Jane, because I just wanted to ask a little bit about the technology on the, on the system and what we could expect. Do you, you're kind of familiar with what we can expect from the software upgrades?
Uh, right now, this is, this is more or less a, I'd have to say, a quantum leap in, in software. The brass system was acquired in 2001 due to the, the Y2K problem that we had. And so at that time, it was an advanced system for its time. This one is a web-based system now and has a great deal more reporting capability and is a much more powerful tool for creating, uh, projections and for tracking a larger organization such as ours. While brass was an excellent system and was, was very useful, I think this one will provide us with additional opportunities and certainly with greater security and the greater ability to, to expand our, our ability to create budgets and to create probabilities and projections and to, uh, report to council and report to the administration in various forms. So we're, we're hoping for additional reporting capabilities as well.
Let me ask you, is it gonna, is it gonna at all impact our, um, our ability for our systems to run smoother, faster, is it gonna smooth out some of the kinks in just our, our overall system?
Um, I can't really address the, the other systems. I know that, that personally, from, from a brass perspective, we've never had those problems with as far as communicating with PeopleSoft, which is our, which is our system of record in the finance department.
So this is much more about data transfer?
Data transfer, that should not be a problem. That, that runs seamlessly. It's, uh, it consists mostly of us sending a text file over to the finance department where they load the budget in and, and that's the extent of, of the, of the communication between the two systems.
Okay. Thanks. Screen is clear. Jane, I was gonna ask, we had a, an agenda review and we, we were talking about this item in the agenda review meeting the other day. And is it, am I clear that part of the problem is the old technology, the old software program that you've been running is no longer gonna be serviceable? Is that correct?
No, it, it's not. The, the city is, is going to the, the Windows 7 platform. It's a brand-new operating system. Because obviously, the, the one, the XP system that the city did have is no longer being supported by Microsoft. That was done back several months ago. They cut off support for that system, so we had to, to move to Windows 7. And I believe ISD's in the process of getting everybody up to Windows 7. When that happened, it was found that brass would no longer function with Windows 7 because it's an old system. And obviously, at some point in time, you run into a, an issue of obsolescence. And so because of that and because of Windows 7 and the necessity to go to that new system, that kind of forced our hand and forced us to go through this process, perhaps a little bit earlier than we had anticipated doing. But we were lucky enough to find a system that is totally compliant with Windows 7 and that we anticipate will be able to be serviceable for the city for at, at least as long as brass does.
Okay. And so that was gonna be my next question. So, and I, and I heard that you guys have actually done a fantastic job kind of patching things together through the...
We have, yeah.
So, um, let me ask this. How, when we purchase a system like this, generally, how long will this last, the city?
And how? I'm anticipating that it'll last at least as long as brass did, which was about 14 years.
Okay.
14 to 15 years.
All right.
Assuming that the technology doesn't, you know, jet ahead of us and, and there's a quantum leap in some kind of technology that renders this system obsolete. I can't guarantee that because I, I don't think anybody can predict where technology is gonna go in the next decade.
All right. Cool. Thank you. Councilman Capriolo.
Thank you. I had one question. So the $488,143 is all we're paying?
Yes.
For this?
Yeah, that will pay for the, the software itself and it will pay for the year one of the initial setup and then through year five for maintenance. So it'll, it'll, it'll pay for a five-year maintenance contract as well. So that's all-inclusive within that amount.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, then. Councilman Baines, did you have a motion to approve when you, in your comments I didn't hear? Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve this. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right. Thank you, Jane. Now, we are going to go into closed session today. And we are going, and City Attorney, if you could announce closed session and then the public has an opportunity to comment on our closed session item and then we'll come back from closed session.
Right. Today, we have conference with legal counsel on existing litigation on the city of Fresno versus Vega matter.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item before we go into closed session? Come forward, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, counsel. Well, it's been about a year since I stood here and basically warned you guys to not take the steps that were taken with the city of Fresno and, and how we were gonna beat you in court. I, I know there's a settlement on the table. We were on the conference call with attorneys last night. And we, we really hope that we can resolve this between the two parties and not have to go to a vote. So, you know, just, just to let you know, this, this water situation is, is a government-caused problem. I understand what you guys are trying to accomplish and I, I applaud you for your efforts, but the fact is, a surface water treatment plant at $250 million pumping water back into our aquifer is, is gonna do nothing. The council is acting like we have an aquifer below our feet that once we pump the water down under the ground, it's stored there and it's there for later use for us to take out. But that isn't the case. If you look at the issues with the Delta smelt, those issues started becoming prevalent in our area back in the early 90s. And since the West Side, well, farmers have been cut off from their water, the West Side farmers in Kerman, Mendota, Fireball have been forced to pump. Well, the aquifer in the valley runs from the east and it flows to the west. So we're gonna spend $250 million, pump water into the ground, use surface water to drink. And the Kerman farmer's gonna pump that water out to water his crops. So me, as a taxpayer for the city of Fresno, we're basically gonna start subsidizing water for West Side farmers. I'm holding right here in my hand a report back when this plan was tossed around City Hall back in 1997, 1996, 1998. And the report says, "Minor modifications ranging in resource costs of less than $10,000 to $1 million are available to achieve some to all water quality, quantity, and reliability goals proposed and plans currently under consideration costing up to," at this time, it was $100 million. Now it's $400 million. It says, "Future unknown needs are best met with future dollars lest the city create an albatross." That's your own city report. Thank you, guys. It's been a fun year. I'm sorry it had to go this way. Steve, wait.
All right. Any other members of the public like to address this item before we go into closed All right, then. We're gonna dismiss to go in a closed session. I don't know...
Council President, excuse me, but, yeah, I, I, I think it's important that I take a moment to clarify maybe what is just a misconception. The surface water treatment plant isn't intended to be pumping water back into the ground. The surface water treatment plant is intended to support daily use or demand. So we don't continue pumping from our underground aquifer, which by a combination of just basins and et cetera, we are able to recharge that aquifer just through groundwater recharge that we already have. It's not intended to refill the aquifer. It's intended to reduce the amount of pumping so that aquifer can naturally recharge. Just need to take and put that on record. Thank you.
And then, Bruce, so the surface water treatment plant essentially will grab more water that's currently available to us in the city of Fresno for our citizens. It'll give us the opportunity to grab more of that water and put it into play and use.
Exactly. So when we do have a wet year, instead of going out the back door, we can capture it. We can use it to provide citizens with their daily water demands, which then allows our aquifer to recover.
Right. Okay.
Where are you doing that?
Councilman Brand.
Just one quick comment. For every gallon that goes to a surface water treatment plant, one gallon comes out. For every gallon goes to a flood recharge basin, up to maybe 65% goes out. There's not as efficient. Thank you.
All right. We'll be in closed session. We'll come back out of closed session, report, and move on to our very next item. Did you report out of closed session already, or do we do that now?
There's nothing to report.
So, now we are at the 9:30 item. Actions pertaining to the sufficiency of initiative petition regarding resolution numbers 2013-143 and 2013-144 that adopted a four-year water rate plan and required council action. So, Madam Clerk, this is under your purview, so if you could lead us in this?
Sure. On June 25th, the Clerk's Office received an initiative petition, and we did a prima facie review on that, and then turned it over to the City County Clerk's Office on June 27th. And they did their review of the petition as well, and they found it to be sufficient. And so, the action you all will need to take today is to accept the City Clerk's Certificate of Efficiency, which is, I believe, Attachment A. And then, you also have to take one of the following actions in regard to the petition: a resolution referring the proposed initiative measure to staff for a report pursuant to Election Code, Section 292, 29, excuse me, 9212, or a bill for introduction repealing resolutions number 2013-143 ratifying the Proposition 218 process and adopting the four-year water rate plan, and resolution number 2013-144 amending the master fee schedule, adjusting the water rates according to Proposition 218. And finally, or you could approve a resolution submitting to voters a ballot measure relating to resolutions 2013-144 and 2013-143 that adopted the four-year water rate plan for the November 4th general election. So, that's the action council needs to take today.
So, we have a choice between those items?
Yeah. First, you have to approve the certification from the City Clerk. That's Item A. And then, Item B is choosing one of those three options.
So, do you, do we need a motion to approve, then?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, let's do this. Let's go out to the public, just like we normally do. We go out to the public first, and then we'll come back up to council. So, any members of the public would like to address this item? You have three minutes to come up to the microphone and give us your view.
Yes, my name is Cheryl Lynn Smith. I live at 15 East Weldon, Fresno, California. I was here on August 15th when this measure was passed. I have to say, it strikes to the fundamental principles of our democracy, of the people in relation to our government. I want to say also that on that day, I need to say that you, my Representative Longzhang, were overheard on a microphone laughing about the low number of letters that were submitted. I felt very disheartened by that, and although you are not running again, I'm very sorry that I ever voted for you. What I see is a certain amount of disdain on the part of many council members toward the public, toward our rights, and toward democratic principles. Secondly, I want to say that you need to reconsider the entire format of how you delivered this to us. You need to give us participation time and education time in how we deal with the problems before us pertaining to water. That, again, strikes to the heart of democratic principles. And yes, it needs to go back on the ballot to rescind because of the way you carried it out. And what you laughed at, Mr. Zhang, and whoever else was laughing with you, should be on the record, because somebody pointed it out that day. And if it's not, who's taking record today?
Our Clerk's Office takes a record of everything.
I don't see anyone typing.
This guy right here.
Okay.
It's all digital, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
2014.
Okay. Please be sure that that is on the record today, that that disdain for human participation has been prevalent throughout here. For specific suggestions on how to deal with some of these problems, I tend to think that the July 9th email coming from Lauren Harding, sent to all of you, I received it myself, he has a wide base of people he emails to, is worth considering. I say, read that for specific suggestions. And I want to say that we need to take it back to the ballot box, and needs to be put back into the hands of the people, and there needs to be open mutual exchange between government and the people, the will of the people, and how we're treated. By writing letters, by the way, we might as well have said, "Why don't you communicate to us through passenger pigeon?" That's what you did to us. It's way beyond whatever happens today. It wasn't even email-ready, and it was very difficult to get the information that needed to be in within the short span of time that you gave us. I have called Sal Quintero's office and Clinton Olivier's office to say, "Thank you very much for participating with the people on this issue." Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Council President Brandal, members of the council, staff, Doug Vegum, City of Fresno. I'm probably going to even need the three minutes, although I can't breathe in three minutes, but I'm going to get this thing out. We've come a long ways from this, and I stood before you back in August, and even back in June, when you sent this notice out showing, and being out front about our concerns. We took a measure that was available to us in the California Constitution, and I don't think it should go without comment that we faced the most unprecedented resistance from a government agency that I've ever seen anywhere in the state of California. Short of the revolution and the Civil War, what we faced is something I don't think any citizen group should ever have to face again. And the taxpayers' wallets are thinner for it. But we're here today to ask you, and again, this is a respectful thing to all of you, because I understand the position each of you are in, and that the city is in. We, the citizens, have a different thought. We did something that I believe is paramount to the rights of the people, and we asked thousands of them to come forward, and they did, and they're asking you to do what the, what Ms. Spence just outlined, one of the three. Obviously, we don't think you need another study. You've had the study, and a rate study that's just thick, and it'll look at this issue at every facet you could imagine. It doesn't need to be looked at again, because that report covers all that. The fact that you have an opportunity here to rescind today is something that I think is your privilege, and I would honor that. However, if you send it out to ballot to let the people speak, I think that's rightfully so, too. That's what we worked for. That's what we took the energy to do, and that's what we sufficiently did in the minds of, and the certification by Ms. Spence and Ms. Brandy Earth. Whatever you do today, I know you're going to be doing it because you've had your own deliberative thoughts. But whatever we do after this is, will be done with respect, would be done with honor, but I ask you one thing. You're going to have your friends come out with hundreds of thousands of dollars to try to beat us down. We'll take that, but just let's have a respectful discussion. That's all we've asked for, to open this thing up to a bigger dialogue on the whole issue of water, and the cost, and how we pay for it, and not hit the individual citizens in many of your districts who just can't afford this. I would like you to take the right step and repeal today. Put it out to ballot. We're ready, and I respect whatever you do today. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to talk today?
My name is Stephen Garrett. I am a undergrad at Fresno State, and today, I'm just going to ask you to vote on the resolution to submit it, submit Measure W before the voters without any more reports. Like Mr. Vegum has already said, there's already been reports on how this is going to affect the public and the city's finances. And, you know, we don't need another report to eat up time, because we have been sued, and Doug Vegum and other proponents of this measure have been sued by the City of Fresno, and taxpaying money has been wasted suing the public. So, we don't need to stall this any longer, because, I'll tell you what, people are not putting up with government malfeasance and incompetence. We're not putting up with thinking that you guys can just do whatever you want, and nobody's watching. So, to not further tarnish your image anymore, I would say, go ahead and vote on the resolution to just submit it before the voters, no more reports. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item?
Steve Waite, 9400 Garden Avenue. Like I said, we were on the phone until almost 10 o'clock last night with attorneys going over, you know, the negotiations. I prefer to see it go that route, guys. The fact of the matter is, if you do decide to put it on the ballot in November, that's not going to be very beneficial for some people that reside in this building. If you decide to do a report, and you push it off until June 2016, you're going to be up for reelection. You're going to be up for reelection, and you're going to be running for mayor. I don't think we want to cloud those races with the water. I think we should just make it a clean slate, either vote to get it on the November ballot now, or let's come to terms with the settlement that we were talking about last night. So, it's quite a political pickle everyone's got themselves in over this, but pretty proud of what Doug and I have done as far as standing up for the citizens of Fresno, and the people like my mother that are on fixed incomes that just really can't afford the extra $300 a year for water. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item? All right. Councilman Brand, you've punched up.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I want to first say that I appreciate the efforts made by Mr. Vegum, and Waite, and others. We always need to be challenged, and we need to ask the tough questions. That's part of the process. And it's an imperfect process out there. The city makes mistakes. You guys make mistakes, but in the end, we try to do the best we can. Mr. Harding, would you mind coming up?
Yeah, I'm Lauren. Lauren Harding, 3411 West Browning in Fresno.
Thank you. I've got a few questions. My assumption is you work actively on the Measure W campaign. Is that correct?
Yeah. Gathered 185 signatures.
Okay. So, you're working with Mr. Vegum, offering advice, and helping out in signature gathering, correct?
I gathered some signatures, yeah.
Okay. You know, I do read your emails, and there's some good information, some of them, some of them I would disagree with, but you've made some pretty harsh statements. I'm going to quote from you today. It said, "Too bad for the 520,000 souls who reside here in this one paper town dominated by Bible belting, ultra-conservative, right-wing, ultra-conservative, Texas-oriented Republicans, let us elect the brilliant Rick Perry as the next mayor of Fresno." Is that your words?
Yeah.
Okay. And you go on to say, "The editorial is a full-throated endorsement of the corrupt, pro-growth jihad of corrupt city officials in Fresno." Is that your words?
You bet.
Okay. And then, in other statements, you went on to say, the City of Fresno, this is from an email on June 28th, "City of Fresno should pass a charter amendment stating that none of the new water coming from the proposed southeast water treatment plant would be used to foster new development in southeast Fresno. All the output to be piped to Hughes." And again, I'll talk about that, and I wouldn't disagree with you. We can, I can prove that. In that same email, you say, "The City of Fresno should strongly advocate for smaller family sizes. We are flooded with immigrants whose cultural treasures, whose culture treasures large families. Most unfortunate, billboards all over Fresno should warn of the need to limit population growth in connection to global warming." So, are you advocating population control in Fresno?
I advocate that you advocate smaller family sizes, and fewer, fewer large families. We, if you read anything that Paul Ehrlich ever wrote, you'll see why that is. Paul Ehrlich at Stanford, world-renowned population biologist, and all the other folks I talk about up there at Stanford, Chris Field, internationally-recognized expert on climate change. He chairs the committee at the UN that writes the IPCC reports, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, warning of just catastrophic results if we don't limit growth and the emissions of greenhouse gases, and sea level rise. Noah Diffenbaugh, another recognized expert up there, talks about how we're going to lose the snowpack within the next few decades. Everything that lands in the Sierras now as snow will be landing as rain, running down the mountain and be back in the ocean by March. I assume that means 20-mile-wide floods on the San Joaquin River. So, a surface water treatment plant will get water, massive amounts of it, through December and January, and then nothing thereafter the rest of the year. No water to raise crops, no water for our cities. That's what we're doing if we foster population growth. John Dugan was the planning director here in 2010. He told me one night at the Citizens Academy, I said, "I grew up in San Jose." He said, "That's what's going to happen here." We had 50,000 people in San Jose in 1950. Now, there's 974,000 there. He said, "That's what will happen in Fresno. We're going to go to 800,000 people here." All that so we can make money. A few rich families that build houses can make money that way, and it's just a crime.
Can I ask you one more question? Some of your emails, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you're suggesting we should put a bigger investment in recharge basins as far as trying to recharge the aquifer as a more economical, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask Mr. Vegum to come up, please? City Clerk?
You don't put the clock on, you have time.
Thank you, Mr. Vegum.
Yes.
Could you agree that any campaign we have going forward, if it's a ballot issue, should be based on facts, figures, accurate statements?
Well, Mr. Brand, let me tell you. I agree with facts, figures, and everything else, and we've been trying to cover all that ground. But when you get into a campaign, and you probably know this as good as I do, and everybody else up here, and any other politician, when it becomes politics, there's no rules, just errors. And if we get into a campaign, we're not going to make the errors.
Okay. Up to this point in time...
So, you get into facts and figures, forget about that. It's a whole new world when you get into a campaign. You know that. You put stuff out when you're running that people would parse and say, "Wait a minute, Mr. Brand, you may be going to stretch some points." So, I don't know where you're going with this, but if you're trying to all of a sudden have the Encyclopedia Britannica as part of our dissertation, I think you know better than that.
Well, let's go between, we've not even started a campaign yet. Over the last six months, you've been actively engaged in a process to gather 5,000 signatures, and congratulate you, you're successful, but you've released information that I want to ask you questions on. City Clerk, have you given Mr. Vegum a copy yet? Okay. Thank you. There was a fact sheet that you put out a few months ago regarding the city's water rate increase, and you're mentioning that two-thirds of the increase is to finance the new water treatment plant. That's fairly close. And you described, this is the area of Sega, is that correct, southeast growth area?
That's, that's one of the big growth areas the city has targeted.
Okay. And there you got a copy. Okay. At the top, and you say, Sega is going to be 20 square miles, correct?
No, Sega is not 24.
Well, your paper, it says 20 square miles.
I said 20 square miles of grow out. When you add up Sega, which is 14 square miles, and the area around it, you got 20. You know this, Mr. Brand. I'm trying to pin down some point that I made as an error. Keep going.
Okay. You call it the sprawl to McCall?
Yeah, that's what some people have called it. I thought it was a cute statement and belonged here.
Okay. So, you, are you against sprawl?
Ah, yes, I am against sprawl. I'm not against growth, but I'm against sprawl. Are you for sprawl?
So, you, when you were on the Board of Supervisors...
Are you for sprawl?
I'm for good, smart growth.
Hey, we got the same accord then.
Okay. But your record as a supervisor was a little different.
Okay. Tell me what it was.
Well, you voted for Ball Ranch. You voted for Copper River. Wouldn't those be considered sprawl projects?
You want to put some caveats in that? I voted from Ball Ranch, which was a 1,200-unit complex, down to 60 homes. Yeah, I voted for Ball Ranch for 60 homes, which had, which was...
Facts and figures, forget about that. It's a whole new world when you get into a campaign. You know that. You put stuff out when you're running that people would parse and say, "Wait a minute, Mr. Brand, you may be going to stretch some points." So I don't know where you're going with this, but if you're trying to all of a sudden have the Encyclopedia Britannica as part of our dissertation, I think you know better than that.
Well, let's, let's go between, we've not even started a campaign yet. Over the last six months, you've been actively engaged in a process to gather 5,000 signatures and congratulate you. You're successful. But you've released information that I want to ask you questions on. City Clerk, have you given Mr. Wagon a copy yet? Thank you. There was a fact sheet that you put out a few months ago regarding the city's water rate increase. And you're mentioning that two-thirds of the increase is to finance the new water treatment plant. That's fairly close. And you described, this is the area of Sega, is that correct? Southeast growth area?
That's, that's one of the big growth areas the city has targeted.
And there you got a copy. Okay, at the top, and you say Sega is going to be 20 square miles, correct?
No, Sega is not 24.
Well, your, your paper, it says 20 square miles.
I said 20 square miles of grow out. When you add up Sega, which is 14 square miles, and the area around it, you got 20. You know this, Mr. Brand. I'm trying to pin down some point that I made. It's an error. Keep going.
Okay, did you call it the sprawl to McCall?
Yeah, that's what some people have called it. I thought it was a cute statement. It belonged here.
Okay, so you, are you against sprawl?
Uh, yes, I am against sprawl. I'm not against growth, but I'm against sprawl. Are you, are you for sprawl?
When you were on the Board of Supervisors.
Are you for sprawl?
I'm for good, smart growth.
Hey, we got the same accord then.
Okay, but your record as a supervisor was a little different.
Okay, tell me what it was.
Well, you voted for Ball Ranch. You voted for Copper River. Wouldn't those be considered sprawl projects?
You want to put some caveats in that? I voted from Ball Ranch, which was a 1,200-unit, uh, complex down to 60 homes. Yeah, I voted for Ball Ranch for 60 homes, which had, which was a buy right where that lands you. So get that straight.
That would seem to be inconsistent with your born-again anti-sprawl philosophy now.
Okay, listen, you're getting into almost name-calling with born-again. Leave those out, please.
Okay, let's, let's move on.
They don't belong here. Anybody can add them in the front of the end. Just stay with the facts.
One central theme, okay, is that the rates are going up. We agree on that?
The rates will have to be adjusted. We don't disagree on that.
All right, the same paper I just gave you, you give an example, the August 2013 rate, that you, that you claim at $18.38 per month on, based on the 700 and something gallons, you know, the 800, 18 HFC per month. Then you make a comparison to July 216, where the rate goes up to 48.34. Is that correct?
Yeah, and if you want to point out the error, that that is, that's the wrong thing, I agree with this. An error. That 263 belongs, was a figure that when you take the .61 versus the .163, it's a 263 increase.
So are you, okay, now the rate, I would agree with you. The rate you show for July 2016 at $48.34 a month, that is the projected rate counting on the standby charge and the variable volumetric charge. I agree. But the rate you show on August 2013 is $18.38 is wrong. It's a math error.
What's it?
It's actually $24.49.
Which one? Wait, wait. Yeah, you're right. That's an error. I agree with that.
Well, did you call this out?
We took that down because it's an error. So thanks for pointing out the error again. We, we appreciate that.
So the, so the rate is $24.49, not $18.38?
Yeah, on your, on your typical, as you call it, typical rate.
Okay, so you made an error.
Yeah, good. I'm sorry. Well, I'll tell you, I'll take that error right now.
Okay, you go on to say that the rates between 2013 and 2016 will be increased 263, 263%.
And that's also an error because it's based on the 18, that, that, but it's, it's accurate when you point out the metric or the, uh, the voltmetered rate, which is .61, comparing it to point one, to 1.63, that is a 263%.
Well, would you say this is misleading since 96% of the meters, the residential meters in Fresno are one inch or less, they will have roughly a double rate. They won't go up that amount of money. So you're saying that it's tripling when it's doubling?
Again, that was in error, and we took it down, and how many people do you have?
Well, I'm dealing with facts. You're dealing with, the facts change as you go.
Let's go with facts in your own rate report or, or your own water, your urban water management.
I'm asking a question.
You say there's 10,000 people that are low-income in Fresno. That's what that report said. Was that accurate or is that an error, Mr. Brand?
Let me move on.
Okay, so you don't want to answer my questions, but you want to put me as the inquisitor. Go ahead.
When you're up here, you can ask the questions.
Okay.
Okay. On the next one, it goes down to say that the US Census says 46% of the Fresno households rent. Renters of single-family homes are responsible to pay utility bills, not the landlord. Well, first of all, you're, I would agree, you're about roughly half the population are renters. I manage thousands of those units.
I know that.
There's a master meter on those apartment complexes.
On the big apartments, but not on the single-family dwellings.
Right, but of roughly half the population does not pay a water bill. A landlord pays a water bill.
Half the population of, of those in rental housing?
That's what I'm saying.
In single-family dwellings are renters.
I'm talking, it's just apartments.
Okay, now you're trying to parse out and parse out and parse out and say, "See, I've got this little thing you're wrong at." Take the bigger picture, Mr. Brand. You can't do that again.
Okay, so they're not paying a water bill. I was at a meeting last Friday with the Apartment Association with all the major management companies that manage the majority of the apartments in Fresno, and I asked the question, "Last September, when the rates were raised, did anybody raise the rents on their tenants?" Not one person, including myself, raised their hand. Nobody raised rents because their water rates sucked. So half the population is not paying for the water piece.
I'm worried about the other half.
Landlords are paying for it, and now let's take the single-family homes.
I'm worried about the other half, Mr. Brand.
You said not a single person in a single-family home is paying a water bill. I can tell you, I have my own rental houses. I can show you lease agreements where I'm paying the water bill.
Okay, that's, but it's your privilege. Is that not true? In our own ordinances where you can hand that water utility bill off to the tenant, and you're not responsible if they owe a million dollars?
I'm going to quote, you said not a single person has paid, so are you, are you saying that's not true?
No, not, not a single person that has received those notices, that, that was a tenant, did receive the notices. You didn't send it to those people.
Prop 218, I just looked it up with the city attorney. It says that, as I asked myself the question, because what I did when I got the rates to my renters, I mailed them out to them to let them have a chance.
That's good. I'm glad you did because you said that before.
But I asked the question, if we had to say redo the whole thing again and do, recertify it, would we mail the protest ballot to the renter? And the answer, by law, it goes to the landlord, the parcel owner. We cannot mail it. Whether I agree or disagree, by law, it has to go only to the property owner.
One, but the other can go to a tenant. And matter of fact, there's been Attorney General rulings on this. There's been other county and city attorneys that have opined on this, that tenants, and matter of fact, even in the legislation enacting Prop 18, and I forget what government code it is, and maybe Mr. Sloan can tell us, but I think it's the 53,000 area of government code, says in that, the legislature made an amendment, that tenants are, are property owners in regard to noticing. So tenants shall receive.
Even though half the tenants in Fresno don't have, don't pay a water bill.
Pardon me?
Even though half the population of Fresno doesn't pay a water bill because their landlord pays it.
Okay, well, what about the other half, that, when we have 46% poverty in this community? What about those people? You're just chucking those out because they're half?
Statistically, about 25% of those people are renters, about 75% are homeowners. Okay. Move on now. A big part of your premise that what we're doing wrong is that you believe this is the biggest component, which is the $230 million southeast surface water treatment plant. But by the way, that varies between 230 million to 300 million dollars.
Make the figure right. It's 290 million dollars when you add the infrastructure of the manifold that feeds out of it. You have another some odd 90 million dollars added to that. So you're talking about nearly $300 million for that plant.
So you're saying that the reason we're building this surface water treatment plant is because we want to finance and provide water for Sega? That's what you've said. Is that true?
Yes, I believe it's one. It's my opinion, yeah. When you get in politics, Mr. Brand, opinion is important.
And your, and your argument is that we're building this plant solely or primarily for the benefit of future expansion and Sega because the location of the plant is by people, Olive and International, right? Right in the heart of Sega or near Sega, correct?
Actually, it's Olive and Armstrong.
Okay, Olive and Armstrong. Well, the reason it's in that location is because it's going to be, receive water from the King's River. That's where the grid would best place that, that land. Okay? Now, the question is, what's going to happen with Sega? One of the handouts I just handed out was a copy of the 2035 general plan draft. You can see at the bottom of the page, it said Strategic Sequencing of Development. So let me first say that the 2035 general plan, for the first time in probably over 50 years, did not add any new sphere of influence for the city of Fresno. It's all future growth, at least till 2035, is contained within existing growth areas. That's the first time in 50 years. Furthermore, the primary focus of the 2035 general plan is infill development and new development areas within city limits. That's a pretty bold statement we're making, that we're not going to continue the same urban sprawl, you know, going on to the hinterland forever. We're, we're making a change. We're seeing the cost of that. Okay? That would not suggest we're going into Sega.
So that suggests to me then that you're not, when this, the 35 plan comes in for the council reworking and voting to adopt it, there's not going to be a move to push this back past Kearney Park again?
Let me, let me continue, okay? And it says that identifies growth areas.
Can you say that right now that that's not going to happen?
One and two.
Okay, so you're not going to answer that question.
I'm talking about Sega right now. Sega is growth area two, and it says, if you look at the following page, it says, "Growth Area Two needs critical infrastructure improvements, and the city does not have the adequate funding for Growth Area Two. It cannot be committed to near-term to this end." Well, the city has virtually no infrastructure in Sega. Okay? It's in our general plan that we're going to focus on infill and development within the city limits. Okay?
What's the biggest part of your infrastructure out there besides roads, where you've got Measure C money and other, other things?
Let me continue. And Measure C, by the way, does not pay for any of the freeway exchanges on the proposed Sega plan.
But Measure C has been a big, big part of Fresno's, uh, uh, infrastructure add-on to this general, to this general expense.
Okay, let me continue. Okay, so the general plan does not provide for growth. Basically, it's an urban reserve, probably 25 or 50 years in the future.
And I say to that, Mr. Brand, you guys should not have an urban reserve. You ought to put it back in the county. And there's a big push, you know, over.
And you're going to see, I'm going to explain why. Be patient, okay? In January 6, 2003, the city and a county signed an MOU regarding the expansion of its gross, of its sphere into the Sega area.
Right.
In that agreement, among other things, it provides for a enhanced revenue-sharing, uh, deal for the county. So the county, any new development the city goes into, so if we go beyond the existing defined sphere, the city's revenue sharing will be less, the counties will be more. So there's, it, there's no incentive for now for the city to go out beyond the existing sphere, okay? Both for property tax and to some extent, sales tax. And also lists three conditions. Condition number one, that the city build a surface water treatment plant, which it did in northeast Fresno. Condition number two is that the city continue the 60,000-acre-foot surface water allocation for the CVP. In fact, if we were to basically say, "County, take Sega back," then we would jeopardize 60,000 acre-feet, which would not be in the best interest of the city of Fresno.
I don't know where you come up with that conclusion.
It's right here, "Most importantly."
I don't know where you get that conclusion. You better cite that conclusion.
I'll give you a copy of the, of the deal. The city agrees to proceed with the developments in Sega only after 60% of the development area in Fresno has been developed. In other words, we infill 60%. Well, let me give you a little fact. Over the last 10 years, we've probably infilled less than 5%. So we can't even start substantive development in Sega until we've got 60%. So that next century, so I'm asking you again, based on all these facts I've given you, do you now believe the reason we're building a plant is because we want to expand Sega?
Well, let me ask you this question. There's just been a.
Ask my question first and then ask your question.
I'll, I'll get to your answer, but let me front-load my question with this. There's a, uh, there's a project moving forward that just got, had just been allowed to be annexed into the city of Fresno through the County Board of Supervisors, the mechanisms that you talk about. And it's moving forward, the first annexation inside Sega. How are you going to vote on that? Are you going to vote no on that, Mr. Brand? Boy, you don't want to tell me, but it's coming, and I bet you're going to give it a yes vote. So let me just point out, there was four things in that agreement that you guys had with the city and county agreement. That you'd do studies on water, you would do studies on four or five other things. You know, none of them have been done yet. None of them have been done. And they had to go to the County Board of Supervisors and say, "You know, we haven't done them yet, and we just, please, but we want to annex it. We'll get to them." Mr. Brand, live up to your concept of commitment.
Mr. Wagon?
Get those things done before you annex. But you're moving property in right now, and you haven't done anything. So it's a hollow talking.
Just give you overwhelming evidence of the reason why Sega is many years in the future. I want you to acknowledge that. The treatment plant is not being built for Sega.
Uh, I can't say that, and you can't say that, Mr. Brand, because there is not a, you cannot point to a point in history in this town where new money has been spent for infrastructure, for new-new, that it went for old. It always went for growth. And that is why this city is leading from behind, trying to catch up with the money they should have been spending on old. They went and spent on new. And you want to do that all over again with a 300 billion dollar bond. And we're saying no to that.
I suggest you read the 2035 general plan. Let's move on. Since you've been here over the past year, I've heard some statements regarding your solutions for solving our problem. One time you made a statement, correct me if I'm wrong, that we had, we had the right, the city of Fresno, to something like 20 million acre-feet of snowpack in the Sierras. Could you explain that?
No, I didn't say you had a right.
What'd you say?
The hydrology zones in the state of California, we are, we are the confluence of two, have a total of 78 million dollars, 78 million acre-feet Sierra hydrology zone length of California. Our two hydrology zones together received average drought years and super-years of dilute of 20 million acre-feet a year. 20 million acre-feet average, okay? That's not my report. That's the Geological Services report. Where do you think that water goes? Do you think it all goes through this little water plant? Or it goes understream? It goes under our feet. And your own report says 30,000, 37,000 acre-feet is all we're going to get out of 20 million acre-feet. That report is so wrong. And matter of fact, the USGS says they don't even understand the flow. And you're, and you don't even have a hydrologist on your staff, and you're trying to tell the world how much of an expert you are.
I think most of that water goes out to the Pacific Ocean when there's a good year.
Under, under our feet.
Let me continue on. You also said.
You're, you're talking out of your hat and through some other orifices. I'm telling you, you're wrong. And, and if you want to have a debate on that issue in another format besides what we have before us today, there are many facts that you've just walked right over and you can't talk about.
Give me, give me an engineering firm that you've worked, consulted with.
What's the Pagan?
Give me your sources.
How about the USGS? How about the fact that you have the Department of Water Resources?
Give me one name of one expert you've talked to. Give me the name of an engineer, a hydrologist.
I'd be happy to send them to you. They're, they're not going to be on the top of my brain.
I've heard about one name.
Pardon me?
I've not heard one name in the last year since you started this process.
Well, there's no need to drop names when you have, when you have.
Well, when you're an expert in everything, I guess you know it all, right?
No, the, the documentation is there. If you just read, it's all there. You can go to the internet. It's a fancy thing. You ought to try it.
Okay.
And, and you can pull down all the information you want.
You've advocated for special assessment districts, correct? I've heard you.
I've advocated to do something that other districts have done, including metropolitan flood, and, and including the, uh, the other, uh, smaller districts have done. And I think we're going to have to go to our property-based assessment to bring down the capital costs to the people because you have people who cannot afford this.
So if we did a special assessment district for the surface water treatment plant, and a lot of the work is in southeast Fresno where there's a lot of contaminated wells, are you suggesting we make that area?
That would be one, that would be one part of the bigger picture.
You wouldn't, we, we have a concept now that's citywide, where north and south is a grid that covers it. You're suggesting that those areas that receive the benefit form assessment districts?
Because that'd be one part of a bigger picture of assessment.
And that would take two-thirds of a vote, right, to approve that?
Yeah, I do, I do understand that. And I think you can get that. If we can get two-thirds for arts and zoo, I think we should get two-thirds for water, don't you think?
Let's assume we did that, and let's assume two-thirds voted. And remember, only parcel owners can vote. The tenants can vote. Okay? So how would, how would a fee structure?
Whoa, 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 whoa. You have citizens in your, in your apartments, or you have non-citizens? I want to know that. Because you just said something they can't vote.
Well, certain types of assessments.
What?
On Melrose, tenants can vote. Other ones, they can't.
No, you're talking about assessments on property value. We're talking about an electorate vote now, Mr. Brand.
If, if we assign the, the district in southeast Fresno and assign the full cost of 230 million dollars, as you say, 200, 300 million dollars to one area of Fresno, and in north Fresno, I'm paying $25, and southeast Fresno, they're paying 250 dollars. That's not going to be very equitable because that surface water treatment plant supplies the entire city.
You're stretching the range of payment. Uh, you're already doing that on your property tax bill. Do you pay your property tax bill? Do you look at it when you get it?
I pay a lot of them.
Okay, so you probably see a met-flood component on there. There's probably two or three met-flood components. One of them is a district-wide, one of them is just your little area, and one of them is a special thing for whatever they done in an area that made, made another whole assessment to be on your property tax bill. Those are all tiered. They're all either regional, very small points in the map, or district-wide 400 square miles. We're all picking up the tab. And by the way, if you live in a high-water area in the, in the district-wide, you pay almost nothing. If you live in a topo area that's low or it could, could flood, you pay the most. It's called a benefit assessment based on the benefit that you may receive. Not a bad idea done all, all the time. And by the way, every time you have a, a property, a, a annexation come in here, do you vote for an assessment, or don't you vote for an assessment to be put on that property? I think you do. At least what history shows that Mr. Brand voted yes on a property assessment.
That's Sega. You said Sega.
It's not stranger to you, is it?
Excuse me, Sega should also form a special, since all the benefits going to Sega, you've mentioned that they should form their own special assessment district.
I said that's part of it.
All 50 people, right?
It's part of a bigger picture. Mr. Brand, you're losing the whole concept here. You're focused on trying to be the enemy of the good, and don't do that. We need to be talking about this holistically. I'm not trying to prevent you, this city, from doing that. I'm trying to come back so the people of this town can afford to do what you want to do. And right now, they can't. And so we need to come back with a different concept. I'm not trying to stop what you are trying to do here.
What would be your plan? What's your plan?
My plan is to go back, we sit down, we come back up with various mechanisms that do the capital cost. What is the capital cost? There's a big debate out there, Mr. Brand, on what is good and what is bad on the system. I've talked to 100 people, if I talk to one, who say the water plant was there, not there one day, and all of a sudden, it was there the next day, when they had all these other concepts about recharge and different mechanisms to get stuff in the aquifer, and that all was swept off the table. Everybody, go away, we're going to do the water plant.
Do you believe we should have more recharge basins as?
Yeah, absolutely. But you know, Mr. Brand, you've got nothing until you put more charge upstream. You've got nothing. As a matter of fact, you have to depend on FID's conveyance.
Do you have any idea?
If they choose not to convey water to you because they have entitlements downstream, you're screwed on that plant. You're going to be pumping water out of the ground to that plant.
Do you have any idea how many recharge basins would take to be the equivalent to the southeast surface water treatment plant?
It would take, I, a, a distribution system, and there's other ways than static. There's, there's force, which has been researched. The water department stopped that. They didn't want to talk about it anymore. But there, there's good evidence that, that a, a charged recharge is a very efficient way to get a lot of water in the basin. And, but the fact of it is, I don't think you got the real facts on this whole thing. I think you've got Chicken Little running around saying that, that aquifer is emptying, when in fact, you can go right over here on Valentine and McKinley, and you get people with 40-foot wells, okay? Now, how did that happen?
Are you suggesting that we're exaggerating the, the drop in the aquifer, that it's just, it's done to justify the program?
I'm not saying we oughtn't be concerned about it, and we shouldn't be conserving water. And by the way, how about helping the people who can't afford to retrofit their systems with some mechanism so they can come back and get some energy-saving water devices that will actually go to the benefit of this whole community? You've done none of that. You've done zero. You just wanted to lay the. You just wanted to lay the cost on the people because we needed, as a government, to build up this big enterprise. It's wrong, Mr. Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
So...
...time limit.
I can give him as long as he wants.
It's getting complicated. We need time, too.
Okay.
Who's my point about public participation, what you've done with the brand?
Mr. Counsel...
...to it.
Have a good day. So, we're looking at, moving forward today to make a decision whether to, one, rescind the rates, two, ask for a study, three, put on the ballot, and probably 25 different variations of that. And as we go forward, we need to deal with facts, as I was trying to make point earlier, and not on opinions and surveys and what sounds good to the public, but what the facts are to the public. In fact, Channel 30 on Monday did a, I thought, one of the better pieces on what is going on in the Central Valley as far as overdrafting water and pumping. And that, we, in the last 100 years, the valley itself has overdrafted so much water that the Sierra Nevada mountains rose about six inches. This is something that in geological times takes millions of years, that we're losing in certain parts at least a foot a year, we're actually falling. I forgot there was a professor Bergman that Mr. Higginson, in fact, had interviewed, and that continued overdrafting, and if this route persists, we've got the farmers, we've got every city, we all have the same straw in the same cup of water, that eventually it'll reach the point of, it's irreversible, it'll destroy the aquifer. There's dangers out there. This is not Chicken Little. This is what's going on in the valley, in Fresno. And the main way to address that problem is to build a surface water treatment plant. It doesn't pump water into ground, it recovers water, and in times when there is excess water, we can store water and actually recover the water table. Is it expensive? Yes, it's expensive. But what is the value of water? What more primary resource, essential resource do we need to survive? Water. There's no other way around it. We're trying to find the most economical way to get there, but there's no easy ways. And I'm not going to blame past councils. In fact, the council before us actually did three consecutive double-digit raises back in 2007, 2008, 2009. This is a problem that's went back probably 40 or 50 years of kicking the can down the road, never, ever fully addressing the problems in the city of Fresno. Now, we have a council that made a bold move a year ago, and nobody wanted to, it was a Republican, that was the last thing I wanted to do. In fact, I found every week, how can I not do this? Myself and Councilman Brandell kept, all right, they're wrong here, they're wrong there. But we kept coming back to the same conclusion. Are there mistakes? Yeah. People make mistakes. The city makes mistakes. I've heard the mistake about the, the treatment plant, the 4 million, 4 million a day gallon plant that's been idle for three years. Yeah, that's there. I've been here for five and a half years trying to find ways to reform city finances, to make sure we don't make the same mistakes. But other people make mistakes. BP had a platform out in the Gulf of Mexico where somebody didn't do their job right, it cost them about $20 billion. PG&E had somebody who wasn't checking the underground gas lines in San Bruno that killed people and cost them billions of dollars. You know, crap happens, and we need to learn from those mistakes and move forward. And it's always going to be a constructive dialogue in how we do it. But we can't always run from the truth and try to say, how can I save a dollar here, a dollar there? Because ultimately, for the average person, you're going from $24 a month to $48 on a nine, a one-inch meter. That's $8 a year. So, you could put that in comparison to other valleys. Other valley cities were lower than most cities in, in the valley. If you look at the state of California, I think Los Angeles over $100 a month. Sacramento's about $60 a month. We're even at double our rates for still the lowest cost of water of any city over 100,000 in the state of California. So, for $48 a month, is that worth having a long-term, sustainable, safe, and affordable water for 50 to 100 years from the future? That's what we're saying. For $50 a month, is that worth the price? You can talk about met museums and parking garages, costs a lot more money than that. And let's say, we could have did the treatment plant for $10 less. That's what you're ultimately talking about. We're not going to double your car payment, we're not going to double your insurance payment, we're not even going to double your utility bill, because the utility bill, water's only one of three or four components on it. For $50 a month, you're going to get one of the best water sources in the state of California. And failure to pass these rates, failure to adopt these rates has other financial consequences. You have a business, and you run your business for 10 or 20 years, I guarantee you, your labor costs went up, your fuel costs went up, your material costs went up. If you don't adjust your prices accordingly, you're eventually going to go broke, whether you're a city or a private business. And I don't know when the point in time, Mr. Esquera will come back in a few weeks and give us the timeline. But eventually, if you don't raise rates, and the rates are measured by the actual cost, that's property. We can't take a rate and say, it only costs us $20 an hour to do it, let's charge $30. You can allow for operational reserve, you can allow for 25% reserves on debt financing, but it has to be at the cost. Eventually, that cost is going to expire. And what happens with that point in the future if you don't do it? You're technically in default of bonds because the bonds require 25% reserve. Then what happens? Do we ask the general fund to bail out the water division? Do we privatize and divest ourselves? Those are things that are real things we have to look at that are right down the road, that will have an impact on everybody that lives in the city of Fresno. So, we have a tough job to go forward, and it's take a lot of difficult decisions to do that. And a lot of things have came up over the past 12 months, ideas, and that I think can be even better. And one of the ideas that originally the plan was to roughly bond about $300 million with the $410 million program, and to basically, you know, sell the bonds at one time, and basically, it's a four-year or five-year program. Since then, ideas, for example, are sequential financing. In other words, if you need $300 million, you take out $75 million for the first phase, the first year. Second year, you take another $100 million out, and by sequentially altering your financing, there's probably at least $2 to $3 million, $1 million per year that the city will save. So, we're looking at, we've got a consultant now, CH2 and Hill, they're finding alternatives to do that. So, there are ways that we're going forward to find the most economical way, in the most fair way, to deliver the project. I could go on, but I want to take everybody's time here. This is 11:58. So, I think that this question deserves to go on the ballot, and it deserves to go on the ballot in November of 2014, not June of 2016. And I think most of my colleagues would agree with me, okay? But this is a significant change by what we're doing. So, when we asked for a study, a normal study would take like 30 days, and we'd have another 10 days to evaluate it. And I think one of the things a study would look at would be, Mr. Vega, for example, says we shouldn't do bond financing. So, if we go pay as you go. So, if you had a $400 million project, and you had $100 million pay as you go, and 300 financed, what would be, what would be the outcome of having $400 million without having bond financing? Well, I can, the easy answer right now, the rate would go up a lot more than $25. It'd probably go up over $100. But Mr. Esquera can come back in a few weeks and give us those kind of answers. He can also look at things like, what does this look like if we take out the southeast water treatment plan, or we go in half and we go pay as you go? Those things we need to know as a council to move forward. And I am willing to have this study done, done by staff only, to have it come back within a timeframe, I believe August 8th is the deadline, correct, City Attorney?
That's correct.
So, that this, I'll make a motion, but that this study come back in sufficient time for us to make a decision to either rescind the rates or to take it to the ballot, and that this will be done and accomplished on this ballot cycle, November 2014. That being said, my plan, if I did the vote today without the plan, I would vote to put it on the ballot. That's, and I strongly believe, in the end, let the people decide what they want to do. They can fill your facts and figures, everything can be rolled out, but in the end, let the people decide. So, City Attorney, I'm going to make a motion that we certif, I'm sorry, I make a motion that we certify the signatures, is that correct, the first thing on my motion?
Yes, that's the first thing to do.
And I want to, again, congratulate Mr. Vega, Mr. Wade, for their getting to 5,000 signatures. Number two, that we approve and order a staff report to study and the impacts of the change by rescinding the rates. Is that the correct wording?
Yes, Counsel. I would suggest we take those separately.
Okay.
Take the certification first.
Okay. Is that sufficient for a motion, then?
The, the second motion would be to approve the resolution refraining the proposed initiative measure to staff for the report.
Right. Okay. And again, I'm making it clear that this will come back in a timely way that we will solve, be able to put this on November 2014 ballot. Is that clear? Okay. Is there a second? A second by Member Baines, thank you.
Is that a second on both items, then? Okay. Okay. Well, Councilman Baines, you're up next anyway, so...
Well, no, I'm going to be quick. So, I was all prepared to not support this motion today, Member Brand, as you are aware, because I'm of the opinion that we need to go to the ballot immediately. I didn't want to cloud the issue with a study. But with the way you framed your discussion, pointing out the numerous errors by those that would seek to have this put on the ballot, and by ensuring in your motion that we have the information back in enough time to have this on the ballot, I can fully support that motion. Thank you for that. And I, and I'll keep my comments brief at this point. I was all fired up to say some other things, but I've since cooled off a little bit, because I, I really have been... There is a deficit of facts that the public has been presented, unfortunately. We heard some of that this morning by someone who would actually suggest that a, that the southeast surface water treatment facility would actually pump water back into the ground. The level of misinformation that has been disseminated to the public is astonishing, astonishing. And absent the ability for the public to have factual information in order to base a rational decision, we need to have a campaign to get that out. And I agree with one thing that was said by someone today, that this, the campaign, should it occur, and I'm hopefully, hopefully it does, needs to be a discussion on facts, actual facts, like the facts that come from scientists and geologists and hydrologists, not the ones that we make up in our room at night before we're going to bed. We need to actually have a discussion based off of science, and by people that actually have the information on the science of water, which are, to my knowledge at this point, have not been presented by those that would oppose the infrastructure we need. So, I'm very curious to see, as my colleague asked, about the experts that are informing those that disagree with us. I'm very curious about expert opinions, because we have them. We're armed with those expert opinions, some of the best in the world. So, I'm eager to have a discussion on facts, Member Brand. I'm encouraged by the fact that you were able to, in a very short amount of time, almost single-handedly unravel some of the statements that have been made by the other side that I am quite certain have been purported to the public. And I'm, I'm hopeful that the majority of the public will tune in to the dialogue that happened earlier with the number of omissions of error, because facts are important, and the correct information is important. I'm also, as a sidebar, I don't read your emails, Mr. Harding, because the ones you've sent have, quite frankly, been, in some cases, extremely distasteful to me personally. And I know, I'm, I'm absolutely certain that that's your intent, so intent accomplished. But your, some of your assertions are despicable, and I don't support them, and I don't support your emails. So, thank you, Member Brand, for allowing the public to hear some of what you have said in support of your positions on water. The idea that you would suggest population control, the idea that you would talk about our immigrant communities right there in, in that fashion is absolutely distasteful and disrespectful and despicable to me. So, I want the public to hear this, the other side of this argument, and then align it with facts. So, I'm encouraged by that, Member Brand. Thank you for your motion today. And like I said, I was prepared to not support this because I did not want the public to think in any way that we were not prepared to go to the ballot and have a discussion of facts be discussed today. So, with, with the way that the motion was framed, full support of that. I certainly hope my colleagues will support this as well. And let's not have, let's remove the incompetent and misleading fact or statements that have been made, and let's overlay them with facts and clarity. Thank you.
Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'm not going to support the motion simply because I, I believe that I didn't support it the last time when we voted for whether to rate, make an increase on the rates. I didn't support that. And the, the thing that I had felt was that there's no question that we need to raise rates, but the concerns that I had was, why all at once? And maybe with the economy being the way it is, the population being out of work, people trying to find work, just wasn't, I didn't feel it was the right time. And if maybe the rates were raised in increments, that would be a lot more palatable to people to, to work with, and then allowing the city more time to plan ahead in terms of what we needed for the, the growth that we're anticipating. And so, the other, the other part, for me not being supportive of it today, is that why do we need, I know the importance of doing studies, but you do studies for two weeks. I think it, there's less dialogue that goes on between both sides trying to, to reach an agreement, and, and to me, it's, okay, it's going to be done by our staff. I have a lot of trust in our staff and what they, what they bring forward and, and the good information they give us. But I just feel that, you know, it's, let's just put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. Now was the, the intent of, of what started all this. So, that's my part. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Quintero. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Bruce, based upon that comment, aren't the, the rates currently raised incrementally?
Yes, they're raised over a five-year period. And it might be, I'm not going, yes, over a five-year period.
And you were going to add?
Well, again, you know, and I'm going to, Tommy, could I ask you, Mr. Esquera, could I, I'm sorry, Mr. Esquera, could I ask you to come up and speak? I, sorry, Mr. Esquera, could I ask you to come up and speak? Because, again, with all due respect to Councilmember Quintero, we're talking about the growth that's going to occur. And what's troubling is that what we're dealing with is, in a lot of ways, what has been a practice around this organization for a long time. Our rates have been historically low for a number of years, which has benefited the community, but at the expense of the future of the organization. As we, in some other areas, we've done the same thing. One of the things I've asked Mr. Esquera to do, and what was painfully obvious, is that, and Councilmember Baines knows this, because he says, I was taught him this, this idea of a sinking fund, a depreciation fund, a reserve for pipeline replacement. With this rate that we have in place, which is a five-year, we're trying to catch up, because we don't have one. We didn't have one. So every foot of pipe that we put in the ground 40, 50, 60 years ago, there was never any money set aside to replace those pipes when they fail. Now, those pipes are in the old part, or the older pipes are in the older part of town. The other part of the project, which seems to be the center of the debate, is this surface water treatment plant. And over the last seven years, and I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not a geologist, but when I get facts like our aquifer is dropping a foot every year for the last seven or so, whatever, and it's been going on for 40 years, our aquifer keeps dropping further and further and further and further down, while we're allowing water to go out the back door, and then we can't capture to sustain what we already have, we're talking about a water plan that allows us, as we've talked about, to maintain the asset that we already have to ensure that we can provide safe, clean, reliable water to the community. But I also want Mr. Esquera to speak to it, because he's new. He wasn't part of this plan at the initial, but he's done these plants, he knows water, he's done water convenience agreement, he understands this as well as other parts of the utility. So, Mr. Esquera, real quickly, for the benefit of everyone who's listening, you've looked at the plan, we've spent a lot of money on this plan, your thoughts, your perceptions, and I'd ask you to clarify or correct some statements that have been made today about what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish.
So I did, thank you, City Manager, and pleasure to be in front of you today, City Council President. Was asked to look at the existing plan. That was one of the things, is it right-sized? What was the basis? And one of the things I wanted to first look like is, can I understand what the problem is? Sometimes you get into these, and there's a solution in search of a problem. Well, let me see if I could understand what the problem was. So I looked back and tried to get an understanding of just how is the groundwater table moving. We have 260 active wells right now that we use to pump into the system. Of those, we have about 240 that we monitor for water surface elevation. So I thought that would be the thing to first look at, is what's the activity of the groundwater surface elevations? And of that, about 85% of them, about 90% of them, have shown a one-foot drop every year for the last seven years. I just went back seven years. I just wanted to look currently at the, at those. Where you see where the wells have stayed the same or have recovered a little bit is, for example, up in the northeast, where the northeast water plant is, where we were able to stop pumping, because we could put water in here. And looking at the, so there's a problem that needed to be addressed. So that was first thing. Then the question becomes, what is the elements of a good water resources plan when you're trying to address that type of a situation? So usually, a good plan has four elements. A demand management piece, that's the water conservation piece, that you want to look at, is there anything we can do to change behaviors of the citizens to maybe address how much they're using? That'll reduce how much we have to pull out of the ground. So you have a demand management piece, you've got stage one, stage two, stage three, you've got an active education program, you've got an active outreach program, and the citizens are responding. We've got a 10% reduction year over year for the first five months. So you've got that piece. That's one that you've got to have. The other one is asset management, as he talked about. Asset management is one of those ones where if we spend the money to pump it out of the ground, and we spend the money to push it into the system, well, it'd be nice if those pipes weren't leaking, breaking, and we were having to, you know, replace water that we were just pumping back into the ground, because we're losing it through leakage and breakage losses. So the plan has those pieces in it. The idea of you've got old pipes that need to be renewed and refurbished, and so the goal is to, let's get after that as well, so we can be efficient, this delivery system is efficient. Your plan has that. Other element that other local governments typically look at is an alternative water supply source. I've got one source, and I'm drawing it down. Right now, you're drawing it seven feet down every year. So other local governments, jurisdictions, is there another source I can get to? Either a run-of-river intake, another reservoir, another lake, maybe I can buy something from a neighbor, because he's got some capacity. Well, you've got, your plan has that. That's the, you know, the mountain runoff water. So you have another source available to you. Now you have to just develop it. So you've got that piece in your, in your plan, that we've got another source that we can tap, so we can reduce the stress on the one source that we're currently using. The fourth element, and this is kind of far-reaching, it's kind of ahead of its curve, but a lot of people are coming to, is the idea of reclaimed water, that your plan has reclaimed water as another element to reduce what we have to pull out of the ground and replace it. So the plan, as I've seen it, has all the elements of a high-quality plan. If I was, if you hired me to come in as a consultant and work with you to develop a plan, it would have these four elements. You've already got them. So cheers to the staff and their consultants in putting together a plan that covers all four of those elements. The question before, as I see it now, is just, the groundwater level continues to drop. Every time we kind of, every year, we move it back as just another foot we're going to lose, another foot we're going to lose. The plan has a curve to help you recover over time, but it just, when do you activate that plan? And if you, the longer you wait to activate that plan, the less recovery we're going to achieve. And so I think the plan is very sound, very solid, it's sized right, and I think it's worthy of moving forward and having a discussion about it.
Mr. Esquera, two things. Could you clarify for the record the purpose of the surface water treatment plant, and why it is more cost-effective than going out and buying up a whole bunch of land that would be used for a recharge?
Yeah, so one of the ways we, that I looked at the plan was, if you look at the site for the surface water treatment plant, it's about 50 acres. And so the plan would be to deliver 80 million gallons a day to that 50-acre site. It goes into the plant, comes out of the plant at ADMGD, goes into the distribution system. And so it's a pretty efficient system. Out of the river, out of the river, into the plant, and I get about 95%, really, is what I get, on a 50-acre site. The recharge system is, we're going to have to take water, and there's ranges, we've been hearing out in the community, anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 acres. So I'd have to, instead of delivering ADMGD to one 50-acre site and getting ADMGD pumped to the system, I would have to look at getting that water distributed across 1,000 acres all across the city, get that into the ground, and then we lose some efficiency, because you're not gonna, every gallon you put into the basin isn't available for you to pump out and put into the distribution system, because I'm gonna lose some to evaporation. I'm gonna lose some, because it's just gonna flow past my pumps that I've got there. My pumps aren't gonna grab every gallon of that water in there. And the other piece of that is, nature's gonna tell you where the best basins are gonna be. I could go find where land's available, and find 1,000 acres here, and 500 acres, and 200, but if nature says, you know what, I'm not going to be a very good recharge site, I'm probably gonna be less efficient on where that, and so we've, that's the other element we gotta look at, is just how efficient can we be in finding the good sites? We've got one good site now, and it's really on the high end of efficient, in terms of delivering water, but, you know, how we acquire that land, where do we go get the land, and is that land gonna, you know, allow the water to get in as fast as we have at other sites? There's just some inefficiencies lost in looking at that distributed network around. So the system, you've got about ADMGD, ADMGD out, that's a pretty lean, mean way to get it into the system for the ratepayers.
A question for you, or Bruce. If we don't incorporate this water plan, someone mentioned water runs out the back door, and that basically means that if we don't capture this or follow this four-step procedure, the plan that we've got in place now, that water will run down the river, and it's lost forever.
Right.
And that's been, that's been sort of the crisis that we face every year, not so much in wet years, but in dry years, that's what happens. And this is a remedy that will help us. Won't solve everything, but it certainly will put us ahead of the curve.
Takes advantage of a resource you have available. A lot of utilities who are in the position you are would do a lot to capture that resource and make it available and usable for themselves.
And Councilmember, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Esquera, this is water that the ratepayers had paid for.
Right.
So they paid for the water.
You already own it.
We could capture it, and it goes out the back door. That's why we're so adamant that we need a surface water treatment plant.
Could you say that again, Bruce?
This is water that the ratepayers have paid for, that we cannot capture. So it is their water that they have bought through our contracts, that because we do not have the infrastructure in place, is not available for them later on.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
So it looks like the screen is clear. I don't know if anybody else is gonna comment, then I'll throw out a few comments. Tommy, don't run off. Sorry about that. And, you know, there's something that you just said in there that I want to return to real quick. You says, you said that this project is sized right. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
And so as you look at, as I've looked at the last seven years, I've just watched the curve drop. The way you sized, the way the plan was originally developed, so one of the questions I says, is, I asked the group was, we know that, we know this, we know the nature of the problem, is we have a falling aquifer, and we got a sense of how fast it's falling, so we have that information. So we've sized the number of projects, the demand management piece, the surface water treatment plant piece, the fixing of the leaky pipe piece. So, you know, water is one of the things you can model. And so I asked them, have you modeled what the reaction will be to the system if we implement all these projects? How do we change the trajectory of the flow? And they said, as a matter of fact, we have modeled it. And they, and I did, like others, and I asked a lot of questions about the hydrologist, and who did it, and the modeling expertise, and so I was satisfied that we did a very good job of selecting the right modeler. And we selected a modeler that's a contractor for the Division of Water Resources, so I felt good about the data. So as you look at how that curve is falling, and you look at the facilities intended to change the trajectory of that, you see that we're not trying to recover the aquifer to pre-anybody-living-here conditions, you're trying to just stabilize it and keep it from falling. So that was the, if, there are others who would want to change the trajectory to the point where, well, let me get it back to maybe a 1950 level, a 1960 level, a 19, you know, pick a year and try and get it back. Right now, we're just trying to flatten the fall of the curve. And so that's what I, for me, that was, my sense of right sizing was, we're not trying to over-recover it, we're just trying to halt the stop of how far it's, how far it's falling. And every year we wait, we just pick up that curve a little farther, and we, you know, we lose a foot every year, and how far we're gonna get it back. So that's how I kind of characterize it being right-sized. I'm not trying to get it back to 1,800, 1910, 1920. I'm not trying to get it back to there. I'm trying to get it to maybe just stop falling, and that's how the plan is set up.
One more question for you, is that, the question, it hasn't come up quite today, but it has about this debate in the past. Is the surface water treatment plant, what section of Fresno does it benefit? So we've heard intimated that it really is built for developers on the southeast section of town, or just the south, and I've heard a lot of different things, just the south end of town in general, stuff like that. Could you tell me about the surface water treatment plant in particular, not the other pipe replacement? I know that that goes across the city. But the southeast water treatment plant, tell me, how does that, what part of town does that benefit?
So the way the distribution system, and this is distribution systems all across the US, you have a network of pipes that sit across the 112 square miles that you have. The water will be pumped into that network of pipes across the 100 distribution system. It'll keep it pressurized. So really, every citizen benefits from the fact that we can get that ADMGD into the plant, pump it into the system, and then it distributes itself all throughout the system. Now, we're working on a hydraulic model. We could model and tell you how long it takes a gallon of water to get from this side of town to the other side of town. We're not there yet, but it'll, it'll really pressurize the entire city, and every citizen will benefit. And they'll benefit for a number of reasons. One is, the water distributes throughout the network. It's just like roads, you know, the road you can get from one place to the other, because they're connected. Similarly, here, water, you can get it from here to there, because the system is connected. The other thing is, if nobody moved Fresno, and they are moving to Fresno, because I'm having a hard time buying a house, I'm getting outbid every time, but if nobody moved to Fresno today, you know, one of the immediate benefits would, we would stop the trajectory of the fall. So people today get the benefit, because we would stop drawing, we would reduce the amount of water we've got to pull out of the groundwater now to the amount equal to the, to the amount that the water plant can provide. So everybody benefits in terms of the water getting into the network, and everybody benefits, because we reduced the rate of fall that we have on the groundwater system.
All right, thank you. And I'm glad that we've got some Channel 24, Channel 30. I know that KMJ is here, the Fresno Bee is here. George, you might pass some of this information on to the editorial board. But I would also, thank you, Tommy. Mrs. Clark, I'd like to ask you to come forward. I want to ask you a couple of questions about our general plan.
Good morning. Jennifer Clark, Director of Development Resource Management.
Jennifer, I know you came into the room. I saw when you came in, and you might have missed this part, but there was a little bit of a debate about Sega. And when Sega comes into play in the city of Fresno, a lot of people that are against this plan believe it's being built for Sega. So there's a lot of other people that don't even know what Sega stands for. Can you do us a favor and remind us what Sega stands for, and when Sega, I mean, you're our planning department, the head of our planning department. When does Sega get built out? And then, can you relate this water treatment plant to Sega, please, for the record?
Sure. Sega Southeast Growth Area was envisioned as part of the 2025 General Plan Process as a future development area for the city. It was anticipated it would be about a 50-year build-out. So the 2025 General Plan, which was written and adopted in the early 2000s, said that 2050 would really be when Sega was completely developed and built out. It was not anticipated that there would be any growth in that area for at least 20 to 25 years, based on our agreement, our memorandum of understanding with the county, which requires that we fully fill in up to 60% of all of our other development areas before we even start planning for Sega. And then there were certain other requirements. There had to be a specific plan, there had to be an environmental analysis before Sega could start being annexed, or any portions thereof. So we still anticipate that that is a good, long way out, well past the development horizon of the 2035 plan. We still anticipate that that growth would not occur and complete until 2050 or beyond. It still is really anticipated to be a very long-range plan, a future development area, a future growth area for the community. For our purposes, as Mr. Esquera said, we are anticipating that any kind of infrastructure improvement benefits the values of the existing investments that property owners in our city have made, so that we can continue to enhance those investments and create long-term value for the existing residents and established neighborhoods of this community.
All right, thank you. So for me, is it safe to say, so I remember the 2025 General Plan, now I'm dealing with the 2035 General Plan. You and I've had discussions about that for many different issues. But in the, it seems to me, and I might be simplifying, that in all reality, Sega, compared to what was once envisioned 10 or 15 years ago, Sega's essentially been put on the back burner compared to what was once envisioned. And now Sega will get built out at some time in the future, when we've tackled 60% of our city infill. Is that correct?
Correct.
So 15 years ago, when Sega was put on, you know, when Sega was the next big thing, you know, that was imminent, and that's the next direction the city of Fresno's going. But the truth is, in that 15 years, we really haven't seen a major emphasis returned to Sega. And now that I look at the 2035 General Plan, I even, in my opinion, I think it's projected out possibly farther than 2050, you know. So, so thank you for clarifying that. So you would say, then, that, that the emphasis of the water treatment plant that we're voting on today, and that we're in the process of voting on, that is not really specifically for what was to be Sega?
For the purposes of the general plan, it allows us to continue to invest in our existing city and our existing residents.
Our existing, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, you know, and I should clear up, that we're, we're so close that we're just gonna work through lunch, Councilmember Long, Long Zhang. So we're gonna, we're gonna work through lunch, we're gonna take this vote, and then we'll still take a lunch, but we will probably shorten lunch a little bit. So we're gonna punch through, gentlemen. Let's see, I want to add another couple of questions. All right. This, you know, I'm just gonna wrap up, I guess. This vote, a year ago, was very difficult for me. Yeah. Will you have another chance to talk? Yes. Yeah, you will. Yeah. This vote was very difficult for me last year, whenever it was. I think, really, I've taken a lot of difficult votes. It was the most difficult vote that I've taken by probably a factor of 10. And now we're at this point where we're in a real tough spot, in my opinion, where I believe, I believe the city of Fresno needs water infrastructure. Gene Higginson just left the room, but he wrote a great report that just came out the other day about groundwater and shrinkage of groundwater all across the valley. But not, but I just want to say that about his article, but the truth is, every day, I'm reading an article about, there he is, every day, I'm reading an article about water in our valley. And so this was really difficult, this was a really difficult vote to me. On the one hand, I do believe that Fresno is at the point where it needs this infrastructure. And on the other hand, it's expensive, and Councilman Brand and Councilman Quintero, you know, both addressed that. So at this point, going through the process that we've gone through, I believe that at this, at this point in time, the best thing I can do is turn this over to the voters of Fresno, hopefully that they will get educated on both sides of the issue, and make a quality statement in November. I have no problem doing a two-week study, but two weeks from now, Councilman Brand, I'm... I don't want to postpone this. I don't want to get in trouble with Mr. Esquera and put this project off way in the future when we're trying to fight a problem now. At the same time, I don't want to put this whole debate upon the city of Fresno for two more years. So I believe I'll support your study request for two weeks, but two weeks from now, unless something dramatically changes, I think we need to move forward and let the voters decide eventually what to do with this. So that's my comment. Councilman Brand, you punched back up.
Yeah. Tommy, could you come up for a second? Okay. Just one question. Of this, you know, $410 million program, and we've talked a lot about the southeast surface water treatment plant, of the rate that's proposed to increase, how much of this could be attributed directly to the plan itself?
So one of the things we had looked at, and I had asked to look at with the staff, was just what is the average expenditures we're going to look at in the department over the next four years, you know, assuming things... And we'd be about, average of about $100 million a year over the next four years. And of that, about 28% of it would be just allocated to the surface water treatment plant project and the associated raw water pipe and the infrastructure to get it out of the system.
So less than 30%?
Oh, yeah.
That's probably due because the most was financed and smoothing out the rate.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I want to reiterate that our intention is to decide this issue. Nobody's going to push it off past November 2014. So again, my position today would have been put on the ballot, but I think two weeks from now, we'll probably come up with the same conclusion, but we'll at least hear what Mr. Esquera comes back with. Thank you.
Screen is clear. Anybody else? I saw you getting a little fidgety down there. Councilman Zhang, you want to... Okay. You want to get to lunch. All right, then, we have a motion to accept, to certify the signatures. And let's deal with that first. We have a motion and a second, and the screen is clear. So let's vote. Let's take a, let's take an electronic vote, then. This is to certify the signatures and the work that Mr. Wegum has done. And let's vote right now. All right, that vote is unanimous. Everybody voting yes to certify all of that work and those signatures. All right, now, our second motion was to choose between the options available to us to do a study with the request that it would be expedited. We have a motion and a second. Let's also vote electronically for that one right now. And that motion passes six to one with Councilman Quintero voting no. All right, then, that is the conclusion of our action today on this item. So we are going to study this for two weeks, or expedite it, I guess. We could call a special session, I imagine. But we will study this item and come back and move forward at that time. We're going to take a one-hour lunch, gentlemen, and come back at 1:30 and stay right on track. So we're not going to do an hour and a half lunch. We're going to go...
You don't schedule communication now?
No. Take a lunch right now, and we'll be back at 1:30. Family things that pull them away. So we're going to get started now. I think Councilman Quintero is going to join us in a minute. We are on to the timed, scheduled communication, the 9:55 a.m. So that's number 148 on our, with this new system. It's number 148. And that is an appearance by Rick Morse to discuss the city of Fresno medical marijuana ordinance. So, Rick, take it away.
Good afternoon. I ran out of quarters this after, this morning, when I was reading for the scheduled appearance. I was going to ask you if you guys validated, but I figured that would be in portage. My name is Rick Morse. I live at 334 East Olive Avenue. Before I analyze the, or give you my analysis of the ordinance, I'd like to give you a little bit of history about my qualifications to analyze the ordinance in the way that I have. In 1981, I became caregiver to my first medical marijuana patient. That's 14 years before the Compassionate Caregiver Act. The recommendation for this patient was issued by Fresno Community Regional Medical Center. So it's not me that the city's fighting against. Since 1981, Community Regional Medical Center's been issuing medical marijuana recommendations. 1995, I worked for Bill Logan, who's an attorney and an expert in medical marijuana law. I worked with Ed Rosenthal to help put Prop 215 on the ballot. In 2004, I became president of the Tulare County Chapter of Americans for Safe Access, with the largest nonprofit organization lobbying for the reform of marijuana laws. 2006, I became a specialist for the Pacific Region for that organization. And at that time, I studied every law from Title 21, United States Code 812B, which is the federal law banning marijuana, all the way down to every local ordinance in the state of California at that time. From that point on, I've either read or helped write most of the ordinances that have come out in the state of California. 2008, I came to Fresno, and with the permission of the city Business Tax Licensing Division, the Planning and Development Department, and the Tower District Commission, I opened Medmark Clinic at 210 East Olive. Prior to opening, I contacted the Fresno Police Department to find out if there were any objections to my signing the contracts. I received none. I waited four days, then I signed the contracts. In 2010, I moved from 210 East Olive to 334 East Olive, which is approximately 300 feet from my original location. I've been operating continuously since. And by a show of hands, can we see who does not know that?
Repeat that again?
Do the city council not know that I moved from 210 to 334 East Olive in September of 2010, and I've been opening continuously since then? Because I'm sure that there are some council members that are aware that I am open, have been open, and have been continuously open. Let's get to the analysis. First, before I do that, I know I'm running short on time. Actually, the analysis, I should do this, because I've only got about 17 seconds. The analysis is insincere on its face. It does not allow for the safe access of marijuana to the patients. On the other hand, in the spirit of cooperation, what I do have here are invitations. There's an invitation for every city council member to tour my shop. This includes the mayor of the city of Fresno, includes the city attorney, the city attorney and the city manager. It also includes the chief of police. The only thing that I need to tell you about these is the city, the elected officials are not allowed to substitute proxies to attend the tour, but the city manager, the city attorney, and the chief of police are, because they're administrative staff, they may have other business they have to take care of. And I'll give you these, and if somebody could actually notify Chief Dyer that he has an invitation down here, I'd appreciate that. And thank you for my time. You guys have been most gracious.
Yeah. Hey, thanks, Rick, for being patient with us this morning, too. Thank you for the invitation.
That's okay. I'm glad we finally got this to this point. You guys have a good afternoon.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is the 10 a.m. hearing to consider formation of Underground Utility District Number FRE-93 on the north side of Nice Avenue from Maple to Hastings. So this is a resolution. And Jim Polesgrove from our staff, you're on deck.
Good afternoon, council. Staff is requesting adoption of FRE 93 so that existing overhead utilities will be replaced underground along Nice in conjunction with a planned road development project. The city has proposed to construct an additional westbound travel lane and bike lane along Nice between Maple and the Hastings alignment. The existing overhead utilities are in conflict with the proposed widening project along Nice. By undergrounding the existing utilities, the impact to the number of trees and the impact to the residents will be reduced. Underground installation of PG&E overhead electrical facilities is funded by utility company funds set aside pursuant to California Public Utilities Commission Rule 28. Other utility companies provide the funding to convert their existing overhead facilities to the underground. All property owners and utility companies in the proposed district have been notified by mail of the public hearing in accordance with the provisions of the code. The code requires the city to identify all residents that will be required to modify their existing overhead services to accept underground utility service. And no overhead utility services have been identified at this time. Should council not approve the formation of the district, overhead services will continue in the area, and the overhead facilities would remain in place along north, excuse me, along the north side of Nice. The pole line on the north side of Nice, west of Maple, will have to be relocated to the proposed right-of-way. This will impact not only the limits of the demolition for the proposed road widening, but it will have significant impact on the residents within the limits of the district. Staff recommends council adopt the resolution, establishing Underground Utility District Number FRE 93, located on the north side of Nice Avenue from Maple to Hastings alignment.
Awesome. Thanks, Jim. We're going to take public comment, and then council might ask a question or two. Any members of the public like to address this issue?
I have my question.
I didn't see one, Barbara, for the 10 o'clock. This one's the 10 o'clock. You had the 10:15 and the 10:30.
I got a bunch of them in there. Well, since I'm up here, I was out, a lot of people don't know how to work, but I've been working. I decided to come. Now, this guy here, on this project we're talking about, this is the county, that's the fear of, fear of influence, annexation. That's where we get the profit sharing agreement. The city gets about 30 something percent, and the county gets about 40 or 50 something percent. Why should we pay all the money, and we only get a small part of profit sharing, and then we do all the work? And these are not our staff. I oppose that. You guys work for the city of Fresno. That's these people upstairs, the capitalists, the ones that got all these projects in the back of your book, budget books. When they divide California, these states up, we're going to be a slave state in Washington, Mississippi. Y'all are going to be in that slave state, too. You got to fight. You're not fighting for us. And this is unfair. It's going to cost a lot of money. You're going to have to go all up underground. It's going to create a whole lot of jobs for people of color. And the people, since they took that affirmative action out, they can hire anybody they want to hire, or bring their own people in there, and maybe work them like social communists. I'm not saying that they are, but they could be, and don't get paid a check at all. So I'm saying that I object to it. There's a lot of these facility districts coming up, and a lot of the public works coming up. Public Works is not our department, and this should be a total investigation. But you guys are proving anything that comes from the Public Works Department because they don't belong to the city of Fresno. You was elected to the city council by the city of Fresno, the people. You was not elected to those people upstairs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment on this item? Councilman Brand, this is in District 6.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Any council members? All right, screen is clear, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Jim. The next item is the 10:15 hearing to adopt resolution and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding the city of Fresno, Community District Number 11.
Thank you, Council President Scott Moser, Public Works. Just like to take this opportunity to introduce to you our new Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer, Andrew Benelli. He'll be presenting the item to you, and hope you look forward to working with him. He comes to us with 16 years with cities of Chowchilla, Visalia, and Reedley, and leading those Public Works Departments with those cities. So I'd like to introduce him to come forward and handle the item.
Thank you, Scott. Again, I'm Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department, and we're here today asking you to hold a public hearing and annex tract 5531 into the Community Facilities District 11. We have received the ballots from the property owners, and they've all approved the annexation into the Community Facilities District.
Nice to have you on board, Andrew.
Thank you.
We're going to go to public comment. If we have any questions, we might call you right back up. Any members of... Well, I know, Barbara, you've got a card, and after Barbara's done, any members of the public can just come up to the microphone.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Since we got a new agenda, the writing, and a lot of people couldn't understand, but since I have a master's in governance and got my associate's science degree, I can understand perfectly. This is another time, same thing, Public Works Department, not belong to the city of Fresno. Mayor had to borrow money from them to even balance our budget, you know, last year, a year before. They charge a lot of money, but yet we're still approving these projects. And we're making so bad, the same people that claims to be our employees, they are where the people that's presenting the case. Where's PG&E? Where's the homeowners? Where's the people that want these things to happen? They probably, they don't even know about it. I'm saying, I'm speculating that, because the staff is always bringing these projects up. Don't the staff work? Do they bring all the projects up here to the council to be approved? What happened to the people bringing their own projects up here? This don't make sense to me. And anybody with sense around here would make sense to you, but since they're going to make this a slave state, and you guys are going to be slaves out there, too, worship the people in Mississippi. I can see you out there, Mr. President, the slave out there when they bring this, that bullet-trained man said one day I was in here. And they got all these annexations down here. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. They got election stuff down here. Then they got all this writing down here for this project, and I don't see one person here to represent this beside the staff, which is not our staff and don't belong to the city of Fresno. And this is against the law. It's a conspiracy. I'll say treason. Thank you.
All right. Any other members of the public like to address this issue? All right. Councilman Quintero, this is in District 5. So, isn't it? Did I read that wrong?
No. It says District 5. Scott? Why were you waving to me?
It is in District 5.
Okay.
That's correct.
Just for clarification, this is just an annexation on the south, on the east side of South Armstrong, San Joaquin Valley. What's your other, is there another cross street close by?
Yes, the eastern boundary of the tract is Temperance Avenue. So it's between the railroad, New California Avenue, Armstrong, and Temperance.
Armstrong and Temperance run the same way?
Of course. That's correct. So it's a half mile east and west, and then it's at California and the railroad.
That's where all that new development's going in there for Sanger Unified, some of it?
This, and this is within Sanger Unified Service Area. That's correct.
And then also, I had a question about the portion that says in the, in the agenda item, it says levy a special tax regard... Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes. The special tax that's under, of course, Community Facilities District, CFDs are under Melrose Law. So this is identical to the CFDs that normally come forward on residential subdivisions and other types of development. So it goes on the tax roll. Property owners would later see CFD, or Community Facilities District Number 11, on their property tax bills.
So nothing out of the ordinary?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other council members? All right, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Scott and Andrew. All right, we are on to the 10:30 item, which we knew was going to be postponed till after lunch, is a workshop relating to bicycle, pedestrian, and trails master plan. And Scott, I believe you're starting us off there also, and then we'll have some others join us, right?
Yes. Thank you, Council President, council members and colleagues, Scott Moser, Public Works Department. This is a workshop the department was asked to bring forward as a result of a couple different things. One was previously, last fiscal year, we were looking to recommending to the council that we budget some Measure C trails and bike lane money into doing an update of the master plan. And the request of the council was to postpone that until we had a workshop. Another item was recently the Millbrook Bike Lane Project between Gettysburg and Ashland, and then Dakota and Shields to close a couple gaps, came up in June for a word of contract. And at the council's direction and request, we were able to get an extension on the bids until August, in order that we could have the workshop today. Some goals that we proposed for the workshop today, one is just providing an overview of the 2010 master plan. Again, and we'll, staff will be brief on that. We did circulate some copies, again, of the previously adopted plan, not with an intent council would necessarily read the complete document, but just to be generally familiar with what we have. Councilmember Zhang, I believe, has read the whole document cover to cover.
At least.[1765.47]
Second, second goal, uh, of course, to discuss the upcoming update, uh, we do have some time, but, uh, by twenty-fifteen, the Transportation Authority, per their adopted policy, says each agency needs to update their plan every five years. Uh, a third point is we wanted to just go over, uh, potential, uh, funding sources, both for new construction and for maintenance of, uh, bike and trail facilities, and then also to talk through potential priority projects, and we will have, uh, a couple of speakers in addition to myself. Uh, just a quick overview of the plan, uh, again, this is the, the document we'd provided. Uh, we went through probably the largest significant, uh, community outreach effort, uh, other than the general plan itself, back in two thousand nine and ten. Uh, we did two rounds of public workshops and got out into the community, uh, we had them in, uh, northwest, southwest, northeast, southeast Fresno, and here at City Hall. Uh, first round to say, just to listen to concerns, ideas, uh, second round after we, uh, had incorporated those into a, uh, planning document and went back to the community and said, what, basically, what do you think? Uh, fourteen hundred responses on a public opinion survey and culminating in the, uh, document, the plan being approved by city council, uh, October two thousand ten. Uh, some key, key components of the plan, uh, one, of course, is planning, uh, matching up, complementing the city's general plan, and then there's, uh, a group of things that are known, uh, in, nationwide, in the, kind of the cycling and trail, uh, communities as the five E's, uh, valuation, engineering, and then education, uh, encouragement and enforcement. So those are three things that, uh, we, we don't talk about as much when we just look at maps and, you know, where trails are planned or to be built, or when we talk about projects, but just educating the community, um, doing things to encourage cycling, and then also enforcement, um, to make sure, for example, that we don't have, uh, parking, uh, in a well-used bike lane, um, or violations, things that impact cyclists. Uh, again, the plan had an implementation section to it that had cost estimates, and this has come up a few times over the years, that this plan had a, a one-point-three billion-dollar price tag. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that in the, in the workshop. Um, and also, another big purpose of this plan was to satisfy, uh, Measure C and the federal and state grant requirements that say you've gotta have an adopted plan to be able to qualify for grant funding. Uh, just briefly, I think these are all fairly familiar, but wanted to go through, again, types of facilities. Uh, class one is, uh, a dedicated, uh, off-street bike path, uh, two-way, um, you're not mixing with vehicle traffic except at crossings. Uh, class two, of course, is the network of on-street bike lanes with paint. Uh, class three are just signs, just saying, putting up the green bike route signs that say essentially, this is a good, this is a good place to ride, uh, but no markings, no dedicated space for the cyclist. Uh, here's just a snapshot, actually Fresno COG, uh, is a good partner with us, as well as the city of Clovis. Uh, this is a map that COG maintains, these are to give the council a snapshot of all the, all the bike lanes and trails, uh, in the metropolitan area. Uh, just, as a quick snapshot, where you see blue, those are painted on-street bike lanes, and where you see green are the class one, uh, trails, uh, things like McKenzie Trail, Sugar Pine, uh, Hernan Trail, in certain areas and so on. Some things that the BMP, Bicycle Master Plan, the BMP does for us is, again, guiding city capital improvement projects, uh, where, where the grant dollars go, or where, uh, when we repave streets, uh, how they look. Uh, here are just a few that have been done over the years, Divisadero here in downtown, uh, that's, uh, upper right McKenzie Trail in southeast Fresno, uh, one we're really proud of. Uh, and then, uh, up in northeast, the Sugar Pine Trail, this, this is a picture of the Fresno Street Underpass. Uh, just some more, a quick run-through, uh, North Point Trail, uh, we've done road diets such as, uh, Fort Washington in northeast Fresno, uh, various Hernan Trail gaps, uh, here's a first-street bike lane, a gap filling project that was done in, uh, central Fresno. That was a very high priority of the, of the B-PAC, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, to get that north-south connection in place. Um, just again, some others, Fulton Van Ness, uh, road diet to go from three lanes to two, get the bike lanes in. Uh, we've done Willow Avenue, uh, and we did a project in, um, uh, council district one, uh, Fruit Avenue, uh, south of Dakota down to Clinton. And the BMP guides new development. Uh, it, it, subscribe, prescribes how, uh, where bike lanes are, for example, brand-new streets, uh, or trails, a number of those are developer constructed, and so throughout the city and our growth areas, we do have new bike lanes and new trails being added, uh, as new development occurs. I just wanna highlight one other item, uh, after the, uh, council adopted the Bicycle Master Plan and a lot of these improvements went in, uh, the city was recognized, uh, we did apply, uh, under city manager Mark Scott's, uh, direction for, uh, Bicycle Friendly Community Award, or designation by the American League of Cyclists, and, uh, we did receive a bronze designation. So we, we installed a couple dozen signs around the city just to designate that, uh, with the city as a bicycle-friendly community. Alright, uh, some things in the update, again, I mentioned the FCTA requires that we do a five-year plan. That could be very minor, it could be a simple update of here are some projects we've done, here's what's left to do, very simple, low-cost update. It could be a more extensive overhaul, we could look at reshaping, uh, the plan and what the priorities are. Uh, we also wanna ensure that we remain eligible, uh, for the new pot of ATP funds, that's called the Active Transportation Program. The state's kind of taken a number of funding pots they used to have, repackaged it into a new one called the ATP. It's got new requirements and we need to get our plan up to date. So, uh, staff will be coming back to the council, uh, to recommend application for a grant, uh, through ATP to update our master plan, and we can match that grant with our Measure C bike and trail funds. Alright, just, uh, before I, uh, bring, uh, Mark Kepler up for one piece of the potential priority projects, wanted to highlight, uh, some staff recommendations. Our, ours, as, as Public Works, working with the B-PAC, working with the council offices and the administration, uh, on potential projects and with developers. One is just basically make the plan more useful. Uh, it should be detailed enough that staff can use it when development projects come in, and it says, okay, the trail's on the east side of the street or the west side, wherever it may be. Um, here's the width, here's how it should be done. Let's, let's make it more useful. And also, let's bring it in and get it in our GIS package, uh, the iView type of system, so that it's really accessible and workable. Um, also, we'd propose to make it more realistic. That, uh, one-point-three billion-dollar price tag included, uh, some things that were deemed fixing barriers to cycling, such as, along our freeways, we only have bridges every half-mile, and one of the recommendations was, how about building additional overpasses on the freeway that would be bike and pedestrian bridges, places like Princeton Avenue, um, or just at intermediate locations. Um, also building a lot more underpasses under the railroads, under, uh, BNSF to get crossings. So we, we'd recommend, not to say, don't ever do those, but that, that help, that causes, from my perspective, for us to lose a little bit of credibility on the plan, if we're saying one-point-three billion. A lot of those are those somewhat, a little bit of a speculative project that says, hey, what, what if, what if cycling and trails were the number-one priority in the city and we had a lot of ridership? What, what would we be trying to build? So, uh, put the, putting those aside, let's reduce our price tag down. Um, also, we wanna make sure that we're consistent with city policy, uh, with things, for example, uh, we don't want the plan to call for a road diet and adding bike lanes if it's not the type of project that we support as a city. Um, and also, there are a few policies we'd wanna eliminate from the plan that don't align with general plan or, uh, city policy, such as a recommendation for requiring showers in, uh, new office buildings. That's in the current BMP, not in the general plan. Quickly on potential funding sources, uh, the council sees these in the budget process, things like, uh, Measure C trails, bike lane money, federal and state grants. Um, construction funding's typically not been a problem for us, uh, it's been maintenance funding that's been challenging. General funds currently not available, uh, not feasible for maintenance of these types of facilities. Uh, we do have community sanitation funds, but that's a fixed dollar amount, so if we add something new that's eligible for community sanitation, it's somewhat like spreading the peanut butter a little, little bit farther, um, and adding something else to take care of. Uh, community facilities districts, of course, that's a primary means by which we're maintaining new development, and that, that, uh, trail is within the CFD. And also, uh, we have a proposal, uh, from, uh, Mr. Kepler and former, uh, Clovis Planning and Development Director, John Wright, uh, about a proposal for some short-term use of Measure C trails funding, uh, for maintenance when we leverage non-measure money to build that project. And we'll be talking further about that in, uh, weeks and months to come. Uh, last slide that I had, uh, is again, potential projects, uh, we do get a lot of requests, uh, for implementing bike lanes by road diets on lower-volume streets, and that, that's a very good policy discussion, I think, for us to have. Uh, we have installed them in both Fresno and Clovis, so we, meaning the community. Uh, examples are up in northeast, uh, Fort Washington, uh, we've gotten good feedback, it operates better, uh, with one-lane each-way and the turn lane, adding the bike lanes than when we had four-lane undivided. Uh, Barstow, it's been a city-county, uh, joint situation in northwest Fresno for a long time, and then, uh, Clovis got a lot of kudos for their Peach Avenue project up in the Buchanan area. Alright, like to introduce, uh, Mark Kepler and ask him to come up and talk, uh, about the urban trail system and, uh, the bank-side trail effort, and, uh, after Mark, then we'll also have, uh, Granville Homes, uh, talking about a potential conversion of streets to add some more trails. Thank you.
I can do that, thanks. Good, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me. Um, most of you, I think, have already heard the presentation we had with the joint, uh, Clovis and Fresno city councils, a few months ago. A lot of this is a repetition of that, just for a reminder, I'll go this, this relatively quickly. There are a few issues, um, here, um, on the trail system, and I'm primarily focusing on the urban, uh, situation and specifically canal banks. That seems to be the, the easiest, uh, quickest way we can start developing a, uh, class-one system in the city of Fresno. So one of the issues is property, uh, do they own it in fee, do they own it as an easement? Um, that's something, an issue generally that's been resolved, I think, that the parties feel comfortable moving forward with, uh, with putting trails on these canal banks. Second issue is construction, um, a number of issues, how, what's the trail gonna look like, where you gonna use it, what kind of pavement source are you going to use, uh, what kind of landscaping, what kind of lighting, how you gonna handle mid-street crossings, those are all common issues in building trails. Uh, third issue is ongoing maintenance, which was discussed, and, and one of the things that, um, when I drafted Measure C, the trail section, um, frankly, you can see when you look, take a look at it, Bruce and I were on the Measure C steering committee, um, if you look at the road section, it's a relatively, you know, here's a billion dollars, whatever to do roads, and then you have a trail section, it's only going to get fifty-five million, it goes on for four pages or something. I think that's what happens when you get a lawyer and professor involved in the project, it just expands exponentially. Uh, but one of the reasons I wrote it with such specificity was I was concerned that the Measure C trail money would, would get eaten up as maintenance money, that the cities would say, oh, this is a good way to kind of, uh, replenish our Parks Department budget, and then no trails would ever get built, and we were promising taxpayers we were gonna build trails. And we're also promising taxpayers that this was gonna be a transportation alternative, not a recreational tax, it was a transportation tax. So, I tried to focus that, drafting of that, on building trails. I wanted that money to be spent on building, and then I figured there'd be, frankly, a political momentum behind maintaining them, and so the cities can worry about maintaining them. And I've been hearing from Bruce ever since on that issue. Uh, so what I was trying to do is, um, trying to figure a way that we could solve this problem. Um, and so, I, I got together with John Wright, 'cause I know he has a lot of expertise in, in, in planning, and said, how can we do this? So the idea we came up with was, we started with the concept of leveraging, which was the idea behind Measure C, that Measure C was never intended to solve all of our transportation needs, it was a measure that was intended to put some local money on the table to get matches from federal and state sources. So, why don't we take that concept and apply it to trails? What if we modified Measure C, uh, to allow some Measure C money for maintenance, with the understanding then that the city will go out, and let's say in this case, city of Fresno, will go and get outside funding to build the trails and leverage it. And, uh, that seemed to make sense for me. I didn't wanna go back to, 'cause I'm gonna have to go back and propose to the Measure C Oversight Committee that we need to modify or, uh, modify Measure C and allow for this. I didn't wanna go back there and simply say, this is a one-for-one deal. I wanted to go back with a, uh, an agreement that was so great for trails that they could, couldn't say no. So the, the agreement we got, and with some negotiating, John was representing city interests, uh, quite effectively, uh, we did a five-for-one deal. Uh, and the deal was this, that we would provide ten thousand dollars a year, per year for five years, so fifty thousand dollars for every mile of trail that you build. We did that based on looking at the actual cost that Clovis and city of Fresno are saying it's costing currently to maintain those trails. Now, one thing you gotta remember, that money is actually maybe a little too generous, and I realize that, even as a negotiator, I realize I was too generous with the city, because the trails we're talking about, uh, like, for example, in Clovis, are sixty to a hundred feet wide, and a lot of the trails in the canal banks are gonna be nowhere near that wide, and they're much more developed in terms of landscaping and lighting and all the rest of it. So, my, my attitude was, and Bruce and I talked about this, I don't care, frankly, if you can take that fifty thousand dollars and stretch it out over ten years, by volunteers, one, I don't care. But I wanna be able to give you enough money to deal with that maintenance issue. The one reason we picked five years was that was about the amount of time that the, the city folks felt it would take for a tree to establish itself, so irrigation becomes less important after five years, so we felt that was a fair, a fair number. So it's a five-for-one deal. So if I give you ten thousand dollars per mile a year, or fifty thousand dollars for five years, you have the responsibility as a city to go out and find other funding for the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to build the trails. And what I was, what I was told from Bruce and others was that, listen, we can find money to build trails, what we can't find is money to maintain them. So that's why we came up with this solution. And we brought this forward to, uh, city managers in Clovis, in Fresno, and the county, and all have agreed that it's a good proposal, they all like it, um, and so as far as I'm concerned, we at least have a, a Mayberry handshake deal on it, um, that it's, it's workable, and, and once we get this product moving forward, I'm gonna go, and I told them that I would go forward to the Oversight Committee and ask that they approve this, um, as a modification. And we're doing it, by the way, as a pilot program. I'm gonna try it for one year, see if it works, and go back, if we gotta tweak it, we'll tweak it, um, but we wanna kind of try it out. Um, the other issue is liability. One of the issues that, uh, that's come up repeatedly is that we can't build these trails because people are gonna fall in canal banks, and it's, people are gonna get sued, yada, yada. Um, I never was a, a big believer in that, uh, red herring frankly, um, but I'm a labor lawyer, not, not a riparian rights lawyer, so I said, okay, we need to study this a little further. My research seemed to indicate that, yeah, there really was no liability here, but just to be careful, I decided to try to get, uh, a bipartisan bill in the Assembly, uh, with Patterson and Perea, to get, uh, the city of Fresno, the county absolved of all liability if they build and maintain class-one trails to certain, you know, professional standards. Spoke to the council of that committee that was handling the bill and said, Mark, you don't need that, because I think you already have absolute immunity. I said, well, that's the way I read it, but the city of Fresno isn't gonna believe me, because I'm always advocating for trails. I need something more official, um, than university letterhead. So, I said, what I'd like you to do, um, is, let's go to the Legislative Council, which is the chief legal officer for the State Assembly of State Legislature, and I want to provide the legal question to that, uh, Legislative Council, and I want a legal opinion on letterhead, saying that the city has no liability if they build, and FID for that matter, has no liability if they build these trails. And we got that letter, I've shared it with the city and FID, and in fact, if I, it, we've brought, it's actually been almost a one-eighty. Currently, people use canal banks as trails, and if they fall in, potentially FID is liable. If you simply designate those canal banks as recreational trails, they automatically, uh, um, absolute immunity attaches automatically. So you've gone from a liability situation to a non-liability situation, just by designating them as recreational trails. So I think FID, they kind of perked up on that issue and they liked it, um, so we've had discussions, Scott and I, and the Clovis folks have had discussions with, uh, Gary Serrato and the folks at FID, and, uh, very positive. Uh, we've, we've moved things forward. Uh, I don't wanna get, steal your thunder, but, um, what we did was we had a meeting with them, they had a, uh, an agreement that was being worked out with the city of Fresno back in two thousand six, I believe, and apparently it died in the city attorney's office, something happened, it just kind of went into the black hole, never came back out. Uh, so they resurrected that agreement, they sent it over to the city attorney's office here. Apparently, I hear, understand today, is that the city attorney here has already reviewed it, minor modifications, they sent it back to FID for their final approval. Um, Clovis is gonna sign on to this as well, so is the county. Once we get all three jurisdictions sign on to it, we now have an agreement between FID and the jurisdictions, we then will move forward on pilot projects both in Fresno and Clovis. So that's kind of where we are, and the reason why I'm involved in this is, well, I got involved in trails a long time ago, thinking it was gonna be a one-shot deal, and it's, it's a gift that keeps on giving, um, was that the mayor asked me several months ago, uh, to get involved in this. She said that this was one of her priorities, was to see if this project could actually move forward, and as you may know, we've been talking about trails on canal banks for, gosh, what, thirty years, um, and you could be the first council that actually gets it done. And if you think about it, there are about two-hundred miles of canal banks in the city of Fresno. If, if you convert those all to landscape, linear parks and trails, class-one trails, think of the changed community that you're going to have. The other thing I would argue to you, um, I'm not gonna have to, I'm not gonna reread you the benefits of, of all this stuff, I'm gonna go ad lib here for a little bit. You know, one of the things you wanna do as public servants is you wanna make sure that you're as effective and efficient, efficient in the use of public resources as possible. Right now, the only thing canal banks do is move water. Why not have canal banks also move people? Why not also have canal banks be additional green space? You can get a three-for-one deal as opposed to a one-for-one deal. Take those public assets and make them more efficient in their Take those public assets and make them more efficient in their use. So I think this is a great way to do it. And we have money, as Scott will tell you, we have money available to build and maintain those trails. So, and by the way, other jurisdictions, you see in the slide presentation, if you want to flip through it quickly, have some examples of what happened in Bakersfield. I mean, no disrespect to anybody from Bakersfield, but come on, Bakersfield? They're ahead of us? That shouldn't happen. So we need to get moving on this, because they've obviously done it there. You can get some pictures that you may have seen before about what they did at Mill Creek, very nice project. There's economic value that occurs around where they build these trails. I know, it wasn't Granville, actually, but I did see a sign for Wathacastanos a little while ago, driving up 168, where they're advertising Harland Ranch because they have trails. And I'm sure Darius will tell you that homeowners, that's something they look for. That's an amenity that they like. It increases the value of their home. Frankly, it probably makes home builders more money. Good for them. Happy for them. It adds value to the community. So, you know, there's an economic value, there's a social value, there is an air quality issue, public use of, a good use of public resources, et cetera. So good examples in Bakersfield of what they've done. I think what I'll do now is turn it over to Scott, if you want to talk about some of the priority projects.
Just briefly, before the Granville team comes up, and Mark talked about the bank-side trail, and that's, that's really multiple council districts, multiple opportunities. We're working with FID to figure out where are the locations that they have the clearest, cleanest property rights, and that we can put that project together. Just, again, other items on the trail side. One is, of course, the Hernan Avenue Multipurpose Trail. It starts and stops, and it's not, not well-used and not well-known. So that's a potential priority to capitalize on the investment we already have and try to finish that, brand it, and make it useful for the public. Another item we've been asked to look at, very popular of interest, we're going to do a bit of a feasibility study on it, is how to get from the Clovis Old Town Trail and Clovis Avenue, District Four and Five, type of connection, how to bring that down to Fancher Creek and the McKenzie Trail. Another potential priority, part of the Fancher Creek development, just want to highlight, this really embodies a lot of the bank-side trail principles. And we have a developer very interested in forming a community facilities district to take care of these amenities, and that'd be the Fancher Creek Trail. So this is just a little snapshot of that. Again, won't go into it in great detail right now. And Mark already talked about a lot of the, the things that motivate us. This is what the council saw in the joint presentation. All right, I want to introduce and thank the Granville team for being here. They put a lot of thought and energy into another type of proposal that is kind of modeled after a success story in Indianapolis, Indianapolis Cultural Trail and some other places in the country. And this is kind of along the lines of creating new trails along our streets. So we're going to flip presentations. And Darius, are you going to start this off?
Thank you, Scott, Council President, members of the city council, Darius Assamee with Granville Homes. I want to first thank Mark Kepler for his over a decade, over a decade, or two decades, a long-time service in helping get trails off the ground in, in our community, Fresno and Clovis. And Mark is right, there's many, many benefits to trails. When companies look to relocating to Fresno, one of the things they look for is, what will my, what will our staff and employees do after hours? And bicycle riding, walking on trails, and open space are a key, key component to attracting new companies to our community. We have several cyclists on this council. I know one of them got injured pretty bad a few years ago, council member Brand. I'm a cyclist as well. I know Council President Brandau is an avid cyclist.
Taking over for Lee.
And getting hurt or cycling.
Riding.
Riding.
And don't forget our city attorney, he's a distance rider over there.
Exactly. And past city attorneys have been avid riders as well. I'm a cyclist myself, and I can tell you, it's one of the most dangerous sports that I've partaked in, but it's also one of the healthiest, lowest impact, if you don't crash. So we started studying bicycle trails, actually, after a ULI conference about a year ago, and its impacts to a, to a community. And one of the interesting thing, things to note on bicycle trails is that when they happen to be behind curb, such as the one that Mark is recommending, and the one that, the ones that we are actually proposing, is that your use goes up substantially. So the goal is to get people that have never cycled, or people that are looking to commute to work and don't have, you know, reliable transportation alternatives to actually cycle to work. So again, people that are cycling, when the, when the trail happens behind curb, and it's not on the street, the usage goes up about 20%. And when there is a safe trail network, cycle, bicycle trail network, other communities such as Portland and Indianapolis, Indianapolis have proven that a large percentage of the population will actually start commuting, commuting with their bicycle trails. We've also, can you pull up the map? We've identified some dollar, planning dollars from COG, and I believe our city manager is communicating with COG. I don't know if it needs a council action or, okay, to look for the planning dollars. We've came up with a preliminary outline of where the trails can go in Fresno-Clovis area. That would be in conjunction with Mark's plan of using canal banks for trails. Also, capital improvement dollars, the ATP funds that Scott talked about, the Active Transportation Program through the state, private sector funding, and potentially cap and trade funding for capital cost. Operational costs to be determined. It could be combination of private and, and public, city of Fresno, and potentially Measure C. Benefits, I think we've already outlined, could be great commute, makes, makes for a healthier community, more open and green space. So with that, I'd like to just make a brief presentation on the Indianapolis trail system that was done very effectively. And Brunet immersion from our team will make that presentation. Any questions? Go on. How many have a bicycle? Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to briefly go over the Indianapolis Cultural Trail concept and a few of the things that they did really well. It's eight miles of linear park throughout the downtown of Indianapolis. It links up with the city's larger trail network, providing forty miles of safe and connected trails and greenway system. It also connects six cultural districts throughout the downtown. It provided five acres of new landscaping, over twenty-five thousand square feet of stormwater planters. And it separates pedestrian from cyclist pathway. Oh, is that better?
There you go.
There we go. Provides separated pathways between bicyclists and pedestrians in key high-traffic areas, which does a lot for both cyclist and pedestrian safety. The overall cost was sixty-three million dollars. Over half was funded through federal tiger grants, and twenty-seven million was funded privately. What makes this a cultural trail rather than just a bike path is the public art installments. They really wanted to make the trail about the journey, not necessarily just the destination. We'll go in order here, so this is looking through windows. This is care, don't care, and it's actually interactive. You can push the button as you walk by, and determines whether you care or don't care. This is Swarm Street, was actually commissioned by an architect. There's over a thousand LED bulbs embedded in the, both the concrete pavers and the open steel framework above, and they're actually motion-censored. So as you approach, the lights twinkle by your cadence and your presence. So a cyclist moving faster will have a brighter, more rapid twinkle than someone walking. The Prairie Modules are meant to juxtapose the urban and rural environments, and it's actually the very first public art installment in the country to return solar power back to the grid. Chatham Passage is a sunken concrete vault that emits floral aromas, and it's actually meant to be a throwback to the Indianapolis old mining industry. And finally, the Moving Forward Bus Shelter is commissioned for original poetry that is illuminated and projected on the concrete. This is the Glick Peace Walk. It was privately commissioned, and it's dedicated to individuals who achieved greatness through peaceful pursuits. You can see Martin Luther King Jr. on the side there, and it includes twelve sculptural gardens dedicated to these individuals, and they are luminary, so the path is lit in the evening. If we learn anything from the Cultural Trail, it's important to note that this was not considered an infrastructure project. It was considered a quality-of-life project for the city as a whole. And the way they did that is through creating a new mindset, a big and bold design, something very different, and a link to the local talent base and the local identity. It does set an economic precedent as well. Within three years of implementation, it was estimated that it's generated over eight-hundred, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four million dollars, eleven thousand jobs created. And in terms of investment precedent, within the first three years, over seventeen million dollars of commercial permits were pulled within a half-mile of the trail, and thirty-six million dollars worth of residential permits within the same radius. In terms of the environment, it's expected to reduce vehicle miles traveled by eighty-three million over the next twenty-five years. Next, we'll focus on Portland, Oregon. They really focus on maintaining a truly connected bikeway system, a framework over the course of the entire city. The way they do that is through bike boulevards, separated, protected bike lanes, like we just saw in Indianapolis. And they have installed over twenty-six bike boxes at twenty different intersections. Bike Boulevard is what you see here. They have barriers, special wayfinding signage, color-coded street signs to tell you that you've arrived at a bike boulevard, striping, and traffic calming through signage and barriers. And lastly, the bike box is an intersection designed to prevent collisions and give cyclists a head start at intersections. So as you can see in the right photo there, cyclists will pull up into the bike box ahead of cars, and they will get a head start through the green light. Overall, Portland was, they didn't see an increase in trip share until they started investing in these systems. They are the highest trip share nationally, with 6%, and seventeen thousand commuters a day travel by bike to work. They saw a 238% increase in trip share from, in the ten years that they were implementing I think we'll leave it at that and let Scott get back to it.
I think that's the end of our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
All right. I think what we'll do, Darius, is we'll probably finish all parts of the presentation, then just call different people up with questions and stuff. Cool.
All right, and actually, that, that did conclude the overall presentation. All right, and with that, just again, want to highlight some of the things that have come up in studies, you know, why, why bikes, why, why bike lanes, why trails, why these opportunities? Things like, such as increasing the amount of biking, walking trips. We've definitely realized that it increases safety and mobility. Cyclists are using the road, much better to provide the space with a bike lane. The trails, you know, being off-street versus on-street, again, things like air quality. We've been, it's been identified in the general plan as far as healthy communities, providing those opportunities, and just overall quality of life. I've, I've seen that sign as well, that says Harland Ranch, trails, parks, bike lane, you know, bike opportunities. So with that, I wanted to just close the presentation and provide opportunity for questions or discussions. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Scott. So we're going to go out to the public first, and Barbara, you've got a card in on this issue, but right after Barbara's done, you don't need a card if you want to make a comment on any of the three different parts of the presentation today. Just come on up, and you'll get your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is beautiful, but we are not in this country. We are a diverse country. We got a hundred and seventy, eighty thousand different race of people here. I don't want it to be like overseas, where it's a dictator and everybody has to eat up under the same bowl of soup. I want to, this is federal money, that's still the taxpayers' money. That is our money they're using. The bike trails, taking land, they, they had that bike trail going on, the people in River Park, they was fussing because they didn't want them people ride behind their yards and stuff all the time, day or night. And then when I see a semi up here in the Granvilles and all these other people that you work around here, using their thoughts and stuff, what about these other people's thoughts? What about the Black Chamber of Commerce? What about the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce? What about the Ku Klux Klan's in the rain that's running our government? Read Riggins' book. I read. Go back to the old Riggins' book and see what time this world's in. Anybody could come up here and talk. That's why I've been out there chopping weeds, raking yard, and I heard city of Fresno on the rural news, I come down, I don't care what I look like. We don't, this is a game to them, money, little trails. What happened to my downtown Fresno? All them tax commitments that was bought by the semi brothers and a whole bunch of more developers, that's why there's nothing down there. We had a beautiful downtown, God, Charles, Zookers, Walter Smith, everybody was down there living good. Now we got houses. They went over there to Manchester. Avenue, we don't even have a name for city of Fresno. California New Frontier. You was here South, South not saying nothing, because your southeast Fresno is in my district over there. And then northeast is out here, River Park, and they get all the tax break, Enterprise Zone, Enterprise Zone, and those other kinds of zones they got for tax breaks. We don't have nothing for the people, nothing. Only thing you guys doing is giving semi to Granvilles and all these little pet people running around here with little sad little stories, and having you guys is on these, planning on these commissions and getting paid money from all these different commissions that you had come up today. I looked through the book a minute ago, everybody on the commission was sound. This is not fair. You let one person, Granville, them semi people, come up here, get all the land, Fancher Creek was already in trouble, they was in trouble with city of Fresno years ago, down in Coles here, and all the Clovis, all the lands, all the bike trails, everything's a mess in this world in California. They, water issues, what about the farmers? What about the farmers out there, the people out there in the fields cutting all them grape shop, kind of like I used to do? What about the folks in these homes and water and stuff? We can't ride no bikes on them trails. That land belongs to us. Every damn thing round here belongs to us. Nothing doesn't belong to y'all. Y'all just serving to our money. Y'all taking care of our money. There's plenty of Fresno's money. You on the other commission, plant commission, this commission, investment commission, got me in southeast Fresno, I know damn what I was born in southwest Fresno. That's why Banes not have been here today, we had a federal government come up in here. You giving all our land to one, a guy got, airplane things came out, and my time is up, and I'm going to get off here, but I say, I'm sorry for all them airplanes, got to see a plane crash. It's not fair. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Councilman, Councilman Jeong kind of corrected me. I forgot that for workshops, we really don't go to public comment, so I'm three minutes too late there. But, so I guess we are going to start at council. I really think that we had some people come down today to talk about this, so we might find a way of working some of that in. Councilman Jeong, you've punched up first.
I do. And I think this is also Mr. Kepler, too, but he doesn't have to stand, I don't think, So when is that item, after the partnership with FID, as in Clovis signed, when does that come to council?
The, the next item that would come to council on that would be a city-Fresno irrigation district agreement. Depending on the form of it, and we're currently working, again, our city attorney's office has turned around that document already pretty quickly. It's now with FID. We would very much... We would very much like to see a final product that could come back within the next couple of months. Of course, that is dependent upon the irrigation district's timeframe, but we are in regular contact with them to try to move that along.
Well, just interesting, I guess it's just, it took a time and maybe a change of perception after eight years of the legal discussion of liability, so I'm glad that it's, I guess that's issue totally resolved, right? There's no more cloud as to who's liable, who's not liable, and where that ends. Correct?
Correct. And I mean, want to give lots of credit, really where credit is due, to our city attorney and his staff in working through that, really looking at it and, you know, crafting some language that could be workable for both agencies.
Maybe city manager, I remember that there was a pilot project, and I talked a bit about this, that was going to be within the district when I was coming in, that was, that stretched from Ashland to Shaw. And we went even as far as putting about $100,000 aside for that project and also to do an initial engineering or plan and develop what that would look like. Is that plan still viable?
That's definitely a segment that's on the radar screen, where we've talked with FID about that before, but again, for several years, there was really no discussion at all. We were just at complete impasse. So it's good to see that moving along, and that would be a viable segment.
Okay. But in terms of the pilot, have we decided where that pilot is going to be?
We have not yet decided on the pilot. Again, working with the irrigation district, they have some ideas as to where it would be easier for them to make that happen in terms of the property rights that we have available, and they've committed to us that they are researching all those options right now.
Well, I mean, and I'll let the planning department decide what the direction, but I figure, you know, since we've already spent some time, some money, and have some plan that's already set up for this particular section, that maybe this is a section that, I don't know where in the rankings it is in terms of the pilot discussion, but you would think that since there's already been some pre-work done in this particular area that this would be moved up in terms of the discussion with FID and with us as a city.
Just from my perspective, I'd see that as probably one of the five most viable sections of bankside trail. There's a few others, and definitely there's some legwork already done.
Yes, and you're absolutely correct. We've done some very preliminary design and engineering work from what I've been told by staff. We do run into somewhat of a challenge when we get to Palm Avenue because you have this thing called the Burlington Northern Railroad that kind of creates some issues for us as far as being able to continue the trail across Palm. But we are certainly looking at that. I think, once we get, and I have to commend Mr. Kepler for his, you know, locked laser, not giving it up until, you know, his last dying breath, and fortunately, make it clear, fortunately, he's still with us, because he has been the one who's moved basically FID to the, oh, yeah, I guess you're right kind of thing. And so I'm very sure, or we've come a long way in a very short time. And so now that we have this issue of liability, in my opinion, and we'll wait for FID's board to weigh in, resolved, I think we can begin moving forward with earnest in moving the first initial projects forward. It may be between Blackstone to Palm, but also Blackstone along Shields heading further to the west, because I guess, again, based on discussion with FID, they have to have access to at least one side of the trail or one side of the canal bank for maintenance. But once we get that resolved, then we can get down into, you will probably see us coming back with an agreement for design consulting services to actually put pen in the paper to come up with a project estimate cost, engineer's estimate, identify the funding, because I'm also going to take Mr. Kepler up on his offer to allocate major C trail dollars to pay for the maintenance. And we won't lowball the quality of the trail mark, just get, you know, a bigger bang for the buck on the maintenance side. But if we can get the COG support on Mr. Kepler's amendment, we get a consensus from FID, I would anticipate within the next six, seven months, or maybe even less time than that, we will be hiring a, we'll be coming to you with a project, you know, scope for a project that asks them to basically lay out the various phases of projects and estimated costs and which project can be delivered, and which one would make sense in conjunction with our general plan, bus rapid transit, access to that, and some other variables that we'll come forward with.
Right. And Council President, the section is Ashland and West. At the time was discussion, I think even gone as far as down to Blackstone as well, but the section that obviously is in the district that, when it was initially started with member Perea at that time, and I came on board carrying that until the package went into our attorneys or went into the black hole and never came out for the last seven years. But that was the section right there. It's the canal section that you can actually connect all the way up to Shaw. And to be honest, people are using it, as Mr. Kepler says, they're already using it now. I mean, I know that FID in certain section has tried to put a security gate to block, to block people from using it, but their section that the gate is no longer there and people, whether it's for jogging, bike riding, or things, that it is already being used by the residents, by our community for that particular purpose. I think it's a, and I still support it, I think it's a fantastic move to make it a proper trail system. Not only are we talking about the positiveness of it, but you look at what it does for the neighborhood. We can have lights there, light it up. It creates a safety issue. It cleans our neighborhood because some of those areas there are used by people that shouldn't be there. It's used for dumping, you know, mattresses, cars, to a whole variety of things. And so we're able to, looks like if we approve this, we're almost doubling our bike or trail system from about 130, 140, adding 200 miles of canals. That's close to 400 of connection in terms of system. Correct, Mr. Moser?
And today, we actually have about 16 miles of Class 1 trails. We only have 16 miles, and the plan would have over 200. So it'd be a dramatic transformation, but it largely depends upon this urban trail system. It really, in the core of the city, it really depends upon the ability to use, either use the canal banks or to start transforming some of our wider streets that don't have as much traffic and going with a, carving out some room for a trail.
Now, wouldn't it be in the interest of FID for us to move on this as quickly as possible to designate it as a trail system to kind of limit the liability issue?
Far be it for me to tell you how to do this politically, but I think that, one of the things I'm concerned about is I don't want FID or Clovis or any other jurisdiction to feel they're being bullied or pushed into it, and I don't think sometimes you understand the weight of your authority. When the City of Fresno talks, you're the 800-pound gorilla. And so I think you have to, I would suggest tread lightly here. Let FID come to the table on this, because the reality is, if they feel bullied or pushed, what they'll do is just get up their dander, they'll dig their heels in, and we'll go through another experience like you had for seven or eight years. So let's let them work through it and work in partnership with this. And I think they're going to come, move forward on this. It was a very productive meeting.
No problem. I mean, what's another seven, eight years?
No, that will not happen. Because Bruce is already telling me it's going to be six months. So, but I actually, you know, one of the things, I hear your concern. I mean, to work on a project, put all that effort into it and nothing happened, it's got to be tremendously frustrating. But I'm actually very, very hopeful that maybe that started it initially, we finally picked up the ball that you gave us and we're going to finish it. The other thing I would suggest is this, I'm a big supporter of trails as transportation alternatives. Recreation is great, but it's a secondary benefit. The first benefit is transportation. The other thing I would say is, we don't want to go where we're not wanted. One of the things that's in the criteria, and I think in the decision, is not just, very important stuff that Bruce has mentioned and Scott has mentioned in terms of connectivity to the overall transportation system and all these other things, but one of the factors that also should be considered is, how badly does that community want it? And one of the things I would say is whoever stands up and says, "We want this," and is most enthusiastic about it, well, that's where we should go. And then I think that once this thing takes off, and I think it will, I think those of us that live in Clovis or on the north side of Fresno know how popular these projects are, I think you're going to see every council member clamoring for having something done in their district.
No, and I'm glad that that piece is brought out. I mean, if there is going to be a kind of a, I don't want to say a public RFP, but let's just say a public RFP in terms of the district with the residents or whoever wants it or would like it to be in their spot first, obviously let the council member know, you know, I mean, when that item was brought forth and when I was out there talking and walking, this was one of those items in the area that our residents was excited about, was waiting to see, you know, and me going back and telling them that we couldn't do it because we couldn't get the legal issue resolved, and, you know, they didn't understand that because they're already using it, and they still don't understand that because they're using it.
I think the other part of it too is seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I mean, even if, for example, if the bankside trail for various reasons is the first trail that needs to be done, and this other trail maybe is not as higher priority for various reasons, still to see it on the list and realize it is going to happen. It's second or third, it's going to happen. It gives people a feeling that, you know, somebody's going to get accomplished, and as they see frankly another trail, let's say Bankside, being built, they realize, well, we're up next. And so they can start getting their act together and doing things to make their product maybe even better than Bankside. So I do think this is going to be an evolution. As we build trails, they're going to get better and better as we learn from our experiences.
Well, I'll let you know now, city manager, obviously I like to carry that torch again, even though I'm a very limited lame duck up here person, but, you know, the district for that area and the residents are going to be supportive of it. And, you know, if we have to go back out there to the community, as we've done with our community meetings and hold those meetings and get the type of support that needs to happen to be willing to be the pilot, that would be exciting. And I think it's, like you said, it's just about building the first one. I think once you build the first one, then the discussion and all the meetings, all the things kind of gets tossed away, but right now, until that first one gets built, you know, I think our residents is going to have the same type of cynicism that I kind of have right now, is that, you know, we've talked about it, we drew up a plan, we put money away. At the end of the day, the powers that be, the politicians like us up here, didn't make it happen. So I'm excited about where we are, and it's like Bruce said, you've done a tremendous amount of work in clarifying the legal challenges in a very short amount of time. I just want to put it out there that we've already had plans for some of these things already. We'd love to see that back up front in terms of true and earnest discussion, and whatever time the, are the partners willing to take. I'm not here pushing or trying to be the 800-pound gorilla, they can take all the time that they want, but I think it's a great opportunity.
I do want to say this, and one of the reasons I think we were so successful, and we built the Clovis Old Town and Sugar Pine Trail, we basically, we started that nonprofit in May of 97, we had $1 million by December. And you said, wow, that's a really successful product, you were really successful. Yes and no. The stars were aligned. We had the right people at the table. We had the right, you know, council. We had the right people working in the city. We had the right people at, that time, the Air District where we got the first major grant. And I'm seeing, lo these many years later, the stars realigning, and I'm very excited about that.
So my, congratulations, sir, for getting that important piece done. Thanks, staff, for that update, and looking forward to really support the program. I'm done, Council President.
Councilman Zhang, do you think that it's coincidental that the black hole that was referred to was the exact number of years that you've been serving?
It could be. As I said, it'll take you at least eight years to figure everything out. Just took me eight years to figure this piece out, you know, but I've been fortunate to be able to do some other stuff to get it out of the black hole. Thanks.
Councilman Brand.
First, I want to thank Mark Kepler for all the work, really going back a long time to the 90s on trails, and Nick Palladino, who's been an advocate for many years for bicyclists in Fresno. And I know Bakersfield had a very successful project in doing this, and I'm glad we're finally, you know, moving in that direction. I'm thinking of the old Mill Ditch, you know, when I was a kid, that's where we went swimming at. Be safe to go, but I think the issue of liability and city attorney, this would apply on public trails, there's an immunity for public agencies?
That's correct.
Okay. So I think that would be one of the big issues, but I think, you know, so often this city, you know, we try to bring in employers, we try to expand our business based on strictly just financial incentives, and really the quality of life is really important. You know, Mr. Simi has shown his sales that people want amenities. They want parks, trails, they want concerts, they want all these things that make a city a city. And I think that as a council, you know, our challenge is to try to, in some small incremental ways, are moving in that direction. And I appreciate the major C offering to provide the maintenance, because that's been our big stumbling block recently. And as that comes up in the future, I mean, that'll be something we can look at, but I think this is a major step in the right direction, and it hits a lot of areas of town that don't have trails. In my district, we have a lot of stuff out there, new trails and dominion, but, you know, in the older areas of Fresno, I think we need these kind of improvements for all our citizens to avoid, to experience a good quality of life. So again, I'm, this is only a public information deal, but I would encourage all the parties to continue doing what you're doing, and I think the end result will be good for the City of Fresno. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go, and then Councilman Capriolio's got some comments as well. So is that picture visible to everybody now? Isn't it? Look at this. Look at this guy. I wanted to prove Councilman Capriolio has been doubtful that I've been riding a bike, so I put this picture up. I know it's not my best, but it's one that I had on my phone, and thanks, Todd, for getting that up.
Council President, I don't see you riding the bike. I see you straddling a bike.
I've got a lot of complaints.
On a grassy knoll, not even on a bike path.
All right. Next time I'll get some video, then I need to get one of those GoPro cameras.
It looks like you're going, where's the start button?
Yeah, no kidding. Actually, I've got a lot of complaints about this photo, especially the angle of the seat. It's apparently not bicycle compliant, and I found out the hard way. But I would just like to reiterate a few things. First, thank you, Scott, for putting together today's workshop after we requested it here about five or six weeks ago, and getting everybody together and talking to us about this. So, and I was really glad because some of these things were decided a long time ago, and then all of a sudden you get new council members and they kind of get lost. That's what I felt happened to me when we had to tackle a bike situation right as I came onto council. But thank you, and then I've also had a chance to interact with the biking community a little bit more and maybe build relationship there. Not too long ago, I had a, we named Anthony Molina to the bike, what is the name of the group? BPAC? We named you as the District Two Representative to BPAC, and I met with Anthony and John McCracken, Stephanie Frederick, and a couple others, and began to talk about biking, bike issues. And this became really important to me. I don't want to tread over past ground, but almost as soon as I came in, you know, we tried to really change the dynamic of Fruit Avenue, and I live off of Fruit Avenue, and matter of fact, that photo there was at Shaw and Fruit. And, you know, I just had a lot of issues with what I was hearing, you know, that Fruit needs to become a complete street with bike lanes on the side of Fruit. And I actually, that photo was taken at my, at the grassy knoll of my bank about two miles away where I live, so it's a four-mile round trip, which I think is, you know, using bikes for transportation rather than just recreation. I go to my bank, or the next day I go to the gym, really using my bike. And I was on, I was on Fruit, I took that trip eight times before I saw another cyclist on Fruit. And so that, that kind of threw me, that's the kind of information that kind of throws me for a loop a little bit. And yet, my parents in Clovis live right off of the trail, and that trail, every time I go to visit my parents, I have to park my truck and wait because people are either walking or cycling across that trail, and so I'm trying to say that that trail gets heavy use. And so I just try to compare and juxtapose the different things that I've noticed as I've been biking. One thing that Scott brought up is the, called like the Herndon Gap Plan, or is that what, is that the name of it, Scott?
That's one of those locations that I've often wondered if it might not be better served by actually having a name to it other than just the Herndon Trail or Herndon Multipurpose Trail. And I'm no expert on that. I mean, it could be the Crosstown Trail or something like that.
Do we work in the Steve Brandow Trail?
By council designation?
For the right kind of money? Absolutely.
But, I mean, definitely, a lot of feedback that we've gotten in the cycling community, both north and south of Herndon, is that, you know, people say, I can't really use this because it's been built by new development for a quarter mile or a half mile, and then it just stops. And people say, how am I going to get going again? I don't really want to ride out in the number three lane on Herndon Avenue with 50 mile an hour plus traffic.
Scott, you're kind of stealing my thunder here.
But I'll stop right there.
So, on Herndon, the trail, and we just, we're in the process of putting the final wraps on a section of Herndon, kind of by Ingram and Palm. And it looks great if you haven't seen it. We've put up a fence that divides the trail from Herndon. We, it's gotten a nice little wind in the trail, and there's going to be, within the next couple of weeks, some landscaping added in there. So it's really going to look, it already looks great, and it's going to look even better once we get the landscaping in. But I would like, so this is called, and Scott even showed it earlier, the Herndon Gap Trail. And there's gaps. So there's trail, and then street, and then trail, and then street, and then trail, trail, street. And all the way to my gym on Millbrook and Herndon, I face, I interact with, either I'm on a trail or I'm on a street. And there is a world of difference between being on a trail and being on a street. When I'm on a trail, even if it's a 20-year-old trail that's got some bumps in it and stuff, my psychology, you know, I just feel comfortable, riding, jamming along, listening to music. Then that little section comes to an end, I have to jump out on the street, and all of a sudden, I feel like my life can end at any moment. And so I'm just being honest. And so these are the things that I've noticed in my biking experience. So, when I get on Herndon, all of a sudden I quit listening to music, I've got to focus on cars, I feel like, gosh, you know, where am I at on this thing? And so, and then I get, I'll maybe go a quarter mile or half mile, I'll be back on trail, phew, feels good again. That's my experience. I know other people have different experiences. I'm very supportive of this trails idea. I think trails are the way to, at least initially, create more bike ridership in our community, okay? And I know that many of our bike advocates feel differently than me. They would love to bike on every street in Fresno, and they feel more comfortable than I do on those streets. So, I'm not taking away from other people's view, but I know one thing, that when I'm on that trail, I feel comfortable. And when I've got separation between myself and the street, I feel really comfortable. I saw some of the pictures in here, I can't remember if they were from Scott's part of the presentation or from Granville's part. But some of these things, these, moving some ditch or canal banks, which to me, my experience with canal banks, they can be kind of ugly, no offense to FID, but, you know, you used to do some of these projects on them, and just overnight, they become like park space almost. And we've been struggling with parks. Mark mentioned we could get a three-for-one on this deal. We've been struggling with park space for years, yeah.
A little factoid. When Clovis added the Old Town Trail, that one trail increased park space in Clovis by 30%.
Wow, right. So here we are, we're way behind the curve on percentage of park space for a community of our size. And we've got this opportunity to provide a trail, add green, park space. And, yeah, this picture right here is fantastic. Just knowing that that's what it looked like at one time, and this is what it could become. And I personally don't care if this is in District Five, District One, District Four, you know, District Three, District Three, yes, Barbara, all the different districts. I don't care if we even put District Two last. This is what our city needs right here. These type of amenities that make sense to people, multipurpose, you can engage a community, people can ride, they can pull over, eventually have an ice cream, whatever, you know, these type of things, very dynamic. And so, I've been meeting with our cycling community to try and move forward on these type of projects. Now, I don't, I don't want to be critical of this, you know. This looks to me like, like this was a real comprehensive view of biking in our community. And I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it, but this doesn't, this isn't, to me, this isn't as attractive. It's like projections that are never going to happen. And I know that the minute I say that, people are bummed out that I said that. But it's very difficult to pull this kind of stuff off, which is to change every street in our city. I mean, the map that shows all the streets that we need to change, that's, the amount of money involved in that, I don't, I don't know if this is attainable. To me, this looks like one of those government products that's not attainable. And I'm just being honest. Maybe there's portions of it that are attainable. But this over here, when you have multiple types, different groups of people that look at this and say, that's fantastic, I want that in my area of town, like Councilman Jeong did. And then you really will have us all fighting over this stuff. And while we've got canals, let's build more canals so that we can build trails. But let me, so I'll get back on point. Mark, I wanted to ask you, I also sit on the Board of FCTA, and that's where some of this hypothetical maintenance money can come from. To clarify, we've been hamstrung because we can build things, but we can't maintain things. And now you've come up with an idea of flipping that around and maintaining some things for. So, in the schedule that Bruce just talked about, six to seven months, does that include the kind of work that you're doing over at FCTA to loosen up?
We can do that at any time. I kind of wanted to wait for the agreement to be signed first, so we know what's going to happen. And then I'm happy to make that presentation, I think we have to make it to the Citizens' Oversight Committee first, and they would then make a recommendation to FCTA. Is that not correct?
No.
Okay, okay, Nick, what is the answer then?
Pardon Tony Bourne first.
Okay.
If you're a city manager, you don't advise for your department to pay for it.
Whatever the appropriate step in the process is, we will take it.
Mark, I could help you with that.
I'd be happy to do it at any time. I think we've got a good agreement here. I really do. I think it's worked out, it's worked out really, really well. And then Bruce has been harping, saying this, sorry, Bruce, has been saying this for quite some time. And it's a nut we had to crack, and we cracked it. So, I feel good about that.
Okay. So, and so that policy needs to be changed at FCTA that could loosen up dollars hypothetically for trail maintenance. And then, so Bruce, tell me then about the part where COG comes into this.
Well, thank you. There was a couple of parts of this presentation, one, to make council aware that I think we've made a major breakthrough. I too agree with Mark, we should give FID some time to understand, embrace, and take what we hope is appropriate or positive action with regards to moving forward with bank side type, or using the canal system as another amenity. There's also a recharge component you left out, but that was for earlier this morning that comes with the canals. But that's an inside baseball joke. As far as the workshop, the other thing I'm seeking is feedback from council. Mr. Assimi and his staff made a presentation as to changes to the trail program within the urbanized area, and doing the street diet, and raising the level of amenities in some of these other, other than just the stripe, a couple of white stripes and a stencil in the middle of the stripe, actually creating a segregated lane using the existing right-of-way, but adding some levels of amenity that you generally wouldn't find. Now, we could also incorporate those amenities in a bank side trail, but Mr. Assimi's presentation focused more on an urban environment in which that trail is used both for recreational, but for, more importantly, for commute-related trips. And since we're looking at creating opportunities for infill development and bringing value to those neighborhoods, which then, of course, is attracted to a developer who's trying to also sell product, high-density infill product, what we want to seek from the council government, as Scott pointed out, we have to update our plan, which we could just simply update it, but what we would like to, if the council is concurs, is seek from the COG to augment our update by incorporating some of the ideas that Mr. Assimi provided today, and fund that incremental difference in our update to include those other strategies. And identifying some potential corridors within the urbanized area, and especially in the older parts of our community, that in a lot of ways, lack a lot of the trail or amenities that some of the other districts currently enjoy. So, if council is supportive of what Mr. Assimi and his staff have presented today, then we will approach Tony Bourne about using some of their planning dollars and help augment our update.
All right, thank you. Darius, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions then. Thank you, Bruce. So, in your presentation, have you already met with Tony Bourne or some of the other stakeholders in this, in this type of projects?
Yes, we did. And we've identified some planning dollars that City Manager is looking at applying for that will start the process of identifying which routes the new trail system, in conjunction with the existing master plan, can go on, mainly for commuting purposes.
Right. And so, in your, when you put your arrows in your map up on the screen, does that overlap with Mark's plan on the canals, or is it something different?
It will actually be in conjunction with. They will complement Mark's plan.
Okay.
So they're not on, this would not be using canal banks, but we'd be using existing right-of-way.
Okay, okay.
And the exact location and the exact streets and routes to be determined through a consultant that the city would hire, once the planning dollars have arrived here. But I'd like to reiterate, the ATP funds, there's two more cycles, two more years that the ATP funds are available. So this round, May 27th of this year, was a deadline, which we didn't, we didn't have all of our ducks in a row, but we have two more opportunities going forward. And then the ATP funds, basically, that program ends in two years. So we don't have a long-term, we don't have a long fuse to take advantage of the state funds.
Now, Renee, could you get it back to that picture of Indianapolis with it?
It's a lot of money, but it would be a great amenity to our city. And part of what we're recommending is to separate cyclists from pedestrians.
Okay. So this is something like what you're interested in. And hypothetically, this could be something that could come in as we develop the BRT corridor on Blackstone, where we have a dedicated lane. Notice how this, in my opinion, this would feel a lot better than riding out on Blackstone, you know, right next to the bus. So, is this the kind of concept that you're?
That's exactly correct, Council President. We're looking at a trail system that's behind curb for more safety. And the idea, again, is to get people to ride a bicycle that normally would not consider commuting, using a bicycle to work.
Bruce, is this the type of thing that we've looked at for the BRT corridors, or?
No, and the reason why is because, given the feedback that we are receiving from council over the elimination of on-street parking, there was quite honestly a concern that whether it's a dedicated lane for a bus or a dedicated lane for a bike, you still have the same problem. You eliminate on-street parking. So what we're looking at are corridors, in particular in the downtown area, for example, where you have no on-street parking, or you can eliminate some on-street parking because there's plenty of off-street parking available to offset that. But, again, that's one of the things that we would ask the consultant to do, is where's the highest opportunity or the best opportunity? And then what are the funding sources? For example, this is funded out of a Tiger grant, so those are federal dollars. And then while the ATP is expiring the next two to three years, and maybe just be extended, there's also cap and trade money that may become available as well to help reduce greenhouse emissions. So, again, my request today is whether or not this is something you want us to incorporate in our updated plan, and then we would ask the COG to help augment the funding of our update.
Just wanted to highlight one other thing about this proposal. This looks really, really great in this situation. Something you'll note in that photo are very, very few driveway breaks in the situation in this environment. So one thing that the planning study and looking at what would be the best streets that could work for this kind of transformation would be, really, how many driveway approaches are we talking about across the area? Mark Kepler and I were just talking about recalling one of the big points of contention in the initial Sugar Pine Trail construction was up on Shepherd between Cedar and Maple. And there was a lot of heartburn in the trails community out there as to why we have two breaks across the trail that go into the commercial development. That's a whole nother story. But that segment with those two major, with those two street crossings to get in the commercial center, it's not as friendly to runners and cyclists and such as other areas that are just a whole half-mile with no brakes. So we'd want to look and say, how can we combine them? What can we do with them? Do you need a, maybe do you need a frontage road to pick up part of it and get them out, and then have the bike trail? So, all of that could be planned and thought through to work out some good locations.
And as an example, you would consider Barstow Avenue and not Shaw Avenue as an example? Because as Scott just alluded, there's many more breaks, commercial breaks going into shopping centers on, or driveways on Shaw versus Barstow. Is there a vote that's needed to send that request?
No, I was going to say, there's also residential driveways.
Eight-foot driveways?
I don't think they're eight-foot. No, just looking for just general guidance from the council. If this is a concept that council is generally supportive of, there's no commitment, other than just ask the COG to find planning dollars to help augment our update.
So Bruce, is that, so that's what I was getting at. Are these two different concepts, or are you just talking about you need direction for the concept of trails?
No, no, this, what I'm going to be requesting with your concurrence is that to take this concept and incorporate it into the update to our bike and trail master plan. So we have to do it anyway. But if I, if we add this component, try to convince the council of government to help co-fund that update to include this particular.
Oh, yeah. I would ask for that. I don't know about the rest of council.
I got a question, City Manager. We're just asking for an update on this plan. Is there a priority in terms of, let's say if this was part of it, then does the challenge of funding comes into this, our original plan, or the canals?
This would be like anything else in competition with either, whether it's a trail here or a trail on a bank. This is just, it's the same pot of money. And so what Scott said was 1.3 billion, I don't even know what the measure would generate over the course of its term, but it does, they do compete against each other.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, because, you know, I mean, it's an overall discussion, and I think it's a good addition as to add to what is on the table and what we have as options to use or not use, Council President. But then, I think we, at least for me, we would have a discussion, then becomes the priorities. You know, what's that priority? Does canal make sense? Does this make sense? How does the money get shipped? Because, you know, some of the things that we talk about, the canals, whether it's a three-for-one or an addition, that adds automatically a certain amount of investment, you know, our number of green space and all those things. So, I think it's a huge discussion, I think in terms of the concept. I like it, but I'm not sure I'm there yet in terms of, does this prioritize over some of the things that we have?
Councilman Jeong, maybe, and Bruce, you might clear us up on this. I think that step, I agree with you on that step, that's full discussion on every item. But I think what he's asking, unless I've got him wrong, is we're going way more initial step than that, which is just to include these type of ideas in the update, right? So, all we're going to say is, hey, can you include these type of ideas in the update? And then someday, we'll all be talking about the particulars of different projects, so. So are you in agreement that we should give direction to include?
I'm in agreement, but I think there should be somewhere in there in that discussion, whether it's paragraph or two, that kind of doesn't necessarily go into detail, but clarifies that this is a concept that we're supportive, but also it's competing interest in terms of the other, you know, trails, bikes, or things that, that's an overall project that we want to make sure that we look at, that's all. You know, and so I support this into it, but I think there should be something to clarify of competing interest in how we then move forward in terms of the discussion.
All right. You know, I think that's it for me then. Councilman Capriolio?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. Under my heading of clamoring, since Councilmember Blongeong has five months left, it takes six to seven months to clear FCTA. I, I think we need to reconsider that comment. More importantly, I think we need to work with the things we have, and Mr. Kepler's two and three-for-one concepts are, are very important. And I think item two is the Clovis to Fancha Creek trail, which crosses two districts, D4 and D5, which seem to me to be a priority, just because you get two-for-one. So it's consistent with our theories. I think Councilmember Quintero would support me on that request. But anyway, so under clamoring, I think we got that one answered. Under FID, I think we should, I don't know if we can put the burden on you, but I, I agree with everything you said, but we need a lynchpin or someone to kind of carry the ball, or do what we need to do. And I don't know who that would be. And I, if it's Scott and Mark, I think that's excellent choices, and we would depend on you to keep it going, and to let us know when we need to get involved. I think some of us mean well, but sometimes we don't really, are not that effective, as compared to you two. So please keep up the good work there and let us know. Under my thoughts on, this was a bicycle pedestrian trails master plan. Under bicycles, I'm like Steve. I've got this book, and I've, my fingers are numb from holding all these pages that I still can't make sense from. So, and what does that mean? I have a, it's not numbered, but there's a page that gives an overview of D A3 through F5. So I cross-referenced that. I found part of my district, not all of it. And then I find out it's from '09, so it's not an update. I really wanted a map showing the current situation, or as close as possible, one that I could fold out and really look at. So I spent a lot of time trying to piece this together, and I would add that I'm not very successful. And then I look at these other pages. It just, I agree with Steve. Maybe it's because we're the newbies or something, but it just, it just didn't make a lot of sense. Do you agree, Steve? Yeah. So anyway, on those items of bicycles, my concern is safety. I think that's absolutely critical. And page 36 had some references to bike accidents, and we need an update on that. On page 106, it listed main streets, and there was just a ton of main streets that were covered with bike lanes. And to me, that's way too dangerous. So where does that leave us? To me, it's side streets. And looking at this, one of the legends, it has Class 1 bicycle paths. That seems to be a real viable option to me, the path versus the lanes. So that's just my individual analysis, not based upon what was said or not said here today. The use of trails as bike paths, as opposed to lanes like in Indianapolis, I think that's a great option. Good journey, reach your destination safely. I really don't see our community as a Chinese province, if you will, with thousands of bikes on the streets of Fresno, and rarely seeing cars. I just don't see that. So we need to balance what we have and what we need. And it's striking that balance between safety, economics, transportation value, recreation value, social value, air quality. I would prefer Mr. Kepler's three-for-one concept, and that we could integrate open space, trails, bike paths, and pedestrian paths. It seems like that would be a great solution to this, and I strongly support that. No question in my mind. And I don't think there was after the dialogue in Clovis. You did an excellent presentation, and really appreciated that. So with that in mind, I hope we can improve on something like this. And I hope we, in our final concept, we have those trails that serve all those purposes, open space, pedestrian paths, bike paths, the whole thing. I think it'd be great. So I'm strongly in support of that, and I'm clamoring for D4 and D5 to be near the top of that list.
There's really one other person here that I think I want to bring up, and that's Nick. Nick Palladino, if you can. Nick, you've been involved in this forever. Your name is still on this, on this project back from 2010. And I know that many of the other names have changed, but you're still there and plugging away. You ride bikes a lot. I think you do the century, hundred, hundred miles an hour, a hundred miles plus bike rides. And so I'd love to hear your thoughts on all of this.
I've been doing bicycle advocacy with the City of Fresno since 1996. And some of the gas, the gas tank is starting to get a little bit empty, I must admit. And hopefully someday, somebody will take my place on this situation. I used to do five or six hundred-mile bike rides a year, but the legs don't have quite as much energy as they used to. I am primarily a road cyclist. I'm not a trail cyclist. I'm one of those people who feels comfortable on a, on a city street without bike lanes. I am one of those people who, who does not require a, a bike lane to bicycle down a city street. Although I fully recognize that many people feel comfortable with that six-inch stripe. I also realize that many people want more than a six-inch stripe. I also am, you know, primarily a bike lane advocate. I, I'm not an opponent of bicycle paths, which in Fresno, it seemed to be called trails rather than bicycle paths. I'm not an opponent of them. They, they had, certainly have a purpose. But even if you were to build a bicycle path, or a trail, on all the canal banks, you're not going to be able to build a usable utilitarian system, transportation system for bicycles that, that would reach all areas of the City of Fresno. You're going to have to build something on, on the city streets. Basically, on streets that would get you to the local, the bank, the post offices, the schools, the commercial shopping centers. And those things are on collectors and arturios. So if you want to be on a bicycle, at some point in time, you're going to be on a collector and arturio. Therefore, you need to have some facilities that will, you know, serve bicycles on collectors and arturios. And I do advocate, you know, for road diets. Now, the City of Fresno has a policy, which I totally agree with. You're only entertained road diets if the average daily traffic on the city, and that street, is less than 20,000 ADT, average daily traffic. Anything above that one, you're degrading the level of service. Also very popular, not only in Indianapolis, but also across the nation, and here in the state of California, is what's called protected bikeways, or cycle tracks. And there is right now in the state of California Legislature, AB 1193, to create in the Street and Highways Code, a new classification of bicycle bikeways called protected bikeways, or cycle tracks. And it will task Caltrans to come in with minimum design standards to create the things that were shown right here as a cycle track. That's, that's only one of many situations. They also had their, they also had their purposes. And they need to be invested, and there are many different, I've seen many different types of cycle tracks, different designs. And some of them I can live with, others I will fall on my sword to oppose those to their bitter end. They need to be investigated on a case-by-case paper, purpose. They certainly should be incorporated into the active transportation plan that the City of Fresno proposes to do. Definitely. They, they should be incorporated into the update of the ATP. And really, because, as has been stated, there are many interested but concerned people who would like to bicycle more, but they feel that that six-inch stripe does not give them sufficient comfort level. You yourself said that. So they need to be attracted out of their single-occupant vehicle under something that they're comfortable with. They want that perception of safety. But a lot of times, and as is said here, like Barstow Avenue, reconfigure Barstow Avenue. Rip up the current Barstow Avenue, and put in a cycle track on Barstow Avenue. But the problem there is, you put something like that, how are people going to get in and out of their houses? They got driveways in and out of their houses. Somebody came to the BPAC with a recommendation to do that, and we basically lynched that person. Because, you know, how are people going to get in and out of their driveways? So, but the con, there are many different designs of cycle tracks. And the situation, they only be investigated on a case-by-case basis. And I recognize that we do need to address the interests of concerned people, such as yourself, who do want some level of comfort. But you also have to investigate how these things function in intersection. You know, sometimes these things fall apart at an intersection. In a situation like that, at a mid-block situation where there's no, no intersections, no driveways, it looks great. But where, what happens in intersections? What happens if there's a driveway? You know, sometimes these pictures, they're deceiving. So yes, we need to do an ADP. We need to incorporate things, situations. But we still need to, in a lot of instances, just because of cost situations, move forward with, with traditional bike lanes, because face it, that's the least expensive option. So first, once again, as we move forward, yeah, you know, find the money to do an active transportation plan. One of the advantages of an active transportation plan over the big master document you have in front of you, is that it's called a Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Master Plan. Anybody who's read that thing, cover a cover such as I have, will find out that there's nothing in there about pedestrians. The active transportation plan guidelines it set forth in, from the state, actually includes pedestrians. So the ATP will have pedestrians included in it. So it actually will cover both modes. That document, I agree, is overly visionary. And when I read all those, looked at all those lines on that, on those maps, I realized then and there is that some of those lines made no sense to me, as a bicycle advocate. Why would we ever want to build some of those lines? But I said at the time, it says, I'm not going to fight each and every line, because then we're going to never get the plan built. We're never getting enough money to build all these things. Let's get something on paper, and then we'll build what can reasonably be built. And then as this thing gets updated every five years, we can perhaps incrementally make it more realistically. But certainly, since we need to do an update, convert it to an ATP, investigate the concept of cycle tracks, implement them where it's realistic to implement them. But by no means abandon the concept of the traditional bike lanes, because they're the cheapest option.
Nick, so when I started meeting, and I met with Anthony, I've met with Anthony a couple of times, and John, and a couple of the other people from the biking community. Do you, one of my thoughts was, where I initially ran into trouble with some of the ideas in the bike pedestrian master plan, and what I was seeing out on the street, was I wasn't seeing the bicycle demand there. So I just started thinking, you know, if you wanted to create bicycle demand and increase ridership, and this, this is very visionary. It talks about really reducing, reducing air quality pollutants, and so on and so forth. So in my opinion, see if you agree with this. If we build some of these trails, and we attract a new ridership, that could hypothetically put the kind of demand for some of the street projects that I see in this. And so, you know, like when I said that, you know, it took me eight trips on Fruit, four miles round trip before I ran into my first other rider. You know, if we get some trails out there, and we get more people in our community riding, then all of a sudden, maybe Fruit has more people riding bikes on it. Then all of a sudden, you've got me, and I have no problem working with bike lanes. But, but without the demand, so to me, these bike trails and putting in amenities like this really start the process of engaging, you know, some new cyclists in our community.
Well, Mark, Mark Kepler has said it several times, and many other people I've talked to over the years has said it. You first of all have to get people on their bikes in a situation where they're comfortable, and that's a bicycle path. I a lot of times prefer the term bicycle path, because that's the term that's used in Street and Highways Code, rather than trails. And once you get them on the bike, and, and they learn how to ride a bike, and then all of a sudden they want to go somewhere, and all of a sudden find out that there's no facility down there, and then they'll find, they'll start demanding the facility. So you first of all have to get them on a bike, in a situation where they're comfortable. The one thing that we also need to be sure and incorporate in the ATP, from the utilitarian use of cyclists, if you, you can build a network, where you can bicycle from point A to point B, but once you get to your destination, what do you do with your bicycle? Bicycle parking. You have to incorporate in your development code, bicycle parking, both at long-term and short-term. And one thing I did not really appreciate hearing was eliminate the requirement for showers in, in large office buildings. A lot of people say, I'm not going to bicycle to work, because I'm sweating when I get there. Well, so we're going to build a network, so people can bicycle to work, but we're not going to provide any shower changing facilities? You're going to spend this money to build a network, and then not give them anywhere to change clothes or shower? That seems strange to me. You need, you need to have end-of-trip bicycle parking facilities, and some shower facilities in large Class A office buildings.
Okay, let me ask a question. Bruce, this showering thing, and this is the first time I've really had a conversation with, are we demanding that upon new, large office buildings or something, or is that just a request?
No, I think right now, the code's got, the code does require that Class A has to provide shower facilities for their employees who decide to cycle to work. I know was the Fresno 4, Mr. Zinkin's project, has showers and dressing areas required as part of that project.
Okay, so, but at what level of a business or company do we get where we require that? Is there a, a minimum of 100 employees, or what is it?
We'll find you specifics, as far as, if there's a threshold, Scott, unless you know what that is off the top of your head.
My apologies, I don't know that threshold off the top of my head. I think the point I was striving to make is that really, the visionary 2010 Bicycle Master Plan was recommending that the city go further along that goal, further than anything in any current zoning or building code would require. And say, you know, let's raise the bar and include that. But, you know, as we've gone through the general plan update, and formulating those policies, you know, doing that type of outreach, you know, to me, again, this is mostly a development, a DARM type of issue, but that didn't resonate with the community or the building industry to, some, some companies may say they want to do that, because that's the kind of culture they want to promote and provide that amenity, but not to regulate and mandate it for all. So that, that's what I was getting at, too. If there's anything like that in the plan, to remove that, to make it match the general plan.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, Scott. Hey, thanks, Nick. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, the screen's clear. I think we're, I think we're done with this workshop for the day. Bruce, I think that, I think that we've given direction then to include this stuff in the next round with COG. Cool. So thank you, Scott, and, and thank you, Mark. Thank you, Darius, and your team, and to our bicycle advocates. Anthony, good to see you. So thanks for coming out, everybody, and we'll just continue moving the ball forward. And this looks very promising. It looks like our joint meeting with the City of Clovis could pay some benefits. So we appreciate that. Thanks, guys. Thank you, everybody.
Let me know, okay? The next five words. That's right, the next five words.
All right. Let's see. City Clerk, you're going to have to help me. I've gotten lost again. Have we gone through every of the major items on our agenda today?
We have, the only thing that's left is the City Council and unscheduled communications.
Is the, is the what?
The City Council items, which are two, and unscheduled communication. And then the City Council starts on page seven on my agenda.
Oh.
Seven.
Okay, yep. The council boards and com- The council boards and commissions. So let's do it like this. We have five council members here. Are there any of the council members that would like to comment on any of the boards or commissions? So this is item 150. We're using our new agenda system. So we're using the last three digits of every identification number. So this is 150 on page seven. Any council members like to punch in that they have anything to report on any of the boards or commissions that they're serving on? All right then, I think we're done with that one. And then what was the other, do we have one unscheduled?
There was one other council, council item, 145. Page eight.
Page eight.
Number 145. It's designation of a voting delegate and an alternate.
Oh, yes. Yes, the designation of one voting delegate and up to two alternates for the League of Cities Annual Conference to be held September 3rd through 5th. And, and am I presenting this? Am I the presenter of this?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So going forward, not hearing from other council members, I, I suggested that I would jump in and become the new, one of the new League of City voting delegates. Clint, Councilman Olivier wanted to remain engaged with the, with the League of Cities, so he doesn't mind going from the voting delegate to an alternate. And then, so I think, what's that? What about my screen? Oh, I see that, yeah. Let me finish talking here. And so, I got that. So I guess that would be that for the new round, we could have myself as the representative and Councilman Olivier as the alternate, and we still have the opportunity to name another alternate. Councilman Capriolio?
I volunteer.
You volunteer also? So as an alternate? Okay.
So that's your motion, right? You and then the two alternates are Member Capriolio and Member Olivier. That's a motion? I'll second it.
Any other council members? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Congratulations, sir.
Fantastic. Now, we are here for unscheduled communication. Barbara, you turned in a card. And so you're going to beat the rest of the crowd up to the...
I always like to do it, because I can't go home walking like this without my stick, but I've been working my yard. Ain't nothing going to stop me and don't stop y'all either when you get out there falling and go for holes. But it was one after this workshop, wasn't there a Grainville Homes, a project that was supposed to came up on? Did you discuss that? It got moved? I didn't hear that. Okay, now my time start. It's a shame that you guys is on all these different committees, all these different appointments. Do you get paid for all that? You guys making a lot of money, but your vote counts. And I don't see how, Bruce need to get out and up here. Bruce, you need to go. You go back out there with them buses, because you is leading this country, there's people in the wrong direction. Especially when I sat up here, when that guy on that bus train said, right here, the manager, that bully train, we gonna be like the worst, the worst people up here, like the slaves in Mississippi. And they dividing these states. I've been talking about this here. Now, when you agree, and you know better, Bruce, I'm going to look at the president, but he's not here for me to look at, so I look at his spot with them girl legs he has set up on that bicycle tray. Maybe you should have rode a tricycle when you was a baby instead of riding a little red wagon, somebody pulling you. And that bike trails out there, what they doing, that cover up that South Pacific Railroad track, that's where our money goes, went over here. And the election department over here is illegal, because all those signs says Southeast Fresno. I keep saying, how many Southeast Fresno, when the planning commission told me with the letter, that is Southwest Fresno. Now, Mr. Baines, I want to know if he's doing, he knows all this. We had Robert Smith and a lot of them up here, the FBI and them got them up here and a lot of them went to jail, because they, and I want to y'all accept the money from these developers. If you guys accept the dime from any of these developers, okay, and these projects, and you know they not right, laughing and spouting and talking crap, don't you think them FBI's ain't watching you? Because they, that's why they went to jail with that operation, the thing where they took a lot of folks to jail up in here. Now, you guys going to be in a lot of trouble, because you agreeing with too much of semi sand, they buying up all the land, you give them all the money, federal, government, state, it steals the people's money. How you going to agree with everything when you know it's the people's money? We gonna have a town full of nobody but the same race of people up in here. And I ain't prejudiced. But let's give everybody an equal chance to see what's going on. And Mr. Sal, you knows that your district, I'm looking at you over here, Mr. Bau Bandu, I want, because his district, I'm signing says Southeast, so I want to know if all our money going to Southeast over here, because Northeast over there, that's where our money is going. And they the one getting these fancy bike trails and dish bank stuff, but we got this recycled sewage water out here that's leaking in the ground, and we've been drinking recycled sewage water out here. Martin McIntyre was in here, they got rid of him, because he came to me, they said, tell me something, what we drinking that bottle? He switching around like this, he said recycling basin water. He walked over, they said, Mr. Al, I'm going to beat you up. And I ain't going to tell you what I told him, what I do if he touching me out here in this doggone place, because they going to act like this is new. This not new. They been drinking recycled sewage water around here, all these kids, after birth pills, everything come from Clovis, all the way out there on the west side.
Barbara, you ran out of time.
Okay, you didn't tell nobody else.
You got the last word today.
I understand, this is my last word. You giving, I understand, but I didn't hear it about. But they drinking all that recycled sewage water and it's killing all the kids and the people, and said we should have some kind of, a workshop on what that water's been doing to the people on Southwest side of Fresno. That's all I wanted to say. You guys got to do a lot of investigation, ask your questions, don't, by Mr. Bong, don't you take no wooden nickels from nobody, do research like them Tea Parties want you to do up here. I'm going to tell them all y'all, I'm going to have the federal government come down here.
Thank you, Barbara.
Bye, babies, and thank you so much.
And I wanted to say that with Councilman Quintero bringing it up early this morning, we are adjourning our meeting today in the memory of Eli Sentenzich. Thank you.